I call this meeting the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Can I get a motion for certification of closed session, please?
Mr. Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Mrs. Cook, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Oenby?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. I now call the public hearing on fiscal year 2023 capital improvement plan to order. Mr. Dowell?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I do have a few comments or rules for this portion of the meeting, public hearing. Citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. The Board's interest and desire is that all comments are heard and respected. We do ask that citizens refrain from applauding or other types of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. The Board does not respond to your comments, but we do appreciate and hear all comments. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation, and the Board asks that you respect their limitation. Was that changed on here as well?
Yeah, it was changed, minute and a half.
Just wanted to make sure.
It's on our agenda.
One minute, thirty seconds?
Yep.
One minute, thirty seconds. And no time may be yielded to another speaker. That is the end of these guidelines.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Mr. Jordan Mock. Ms. Jordan. Mister?
Mister.
Mister.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Jordan Mock. I'm a proud graduate of Lafayette High School, class of 2015. And yes, that was the year that the Lafayette-Jamestown football game ended with Lafayette holding Jamestown to negative seventy-eight yards of offense. Go Rams! I'm in my third year of law school at Wake Forest University, and I'm here today at the request of my educational law professor, who has required the class to speak at a school board meeting or risk the consequence of four marks. I came today hoping to discuss CRT, mask, and vaccine mandates, or any other recently political hot topic. However, given that the topic of this meeting is the capital improvement plan, I begrudgingly read the entire document in hopes I would find something of equal controversy to speak about. I did not. The plan seems fair, straightforward, and without obvious bias. That said, I do have one piece of contention regarding the $200,000 expenditure for the refurbishment of office space. Primarily, I'm confused as to what exactly is meant by refurbishment, and I'm curious as to what exactly needs to be refurbished. Is there structural damage, electrical heating or cooling issues, or perhaps the county is updating their technology? If not, I am skeptical that $200,000 is needed to refurbish a building which is primarily used by administrators. To be clear, I do not mean to insinuate that the money is being spent irrationally on items such as fancy chairs, desks, or lounge areas. But $200,000 is a substantial amount of money, and I believe taxpayers should be privy to a more itemized explanation. If one exists, I apologize and ask that you please point me to it. If one does not exist, please do not use $200,000 to make the administrators' offices more comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mock. Go Demon Deacons. Mr. Jay Everson. Mr. Everson? Okay. Ms. Lindsay Taylor?
Hello, my name is Lindsay Taylor, and I'm a teacher at James River Elementary School and the Vice President of the Williamsburg James City Education Association. On behalf of our membership, the WJCEA Executive Board would like to show our support for the new pre-K to five elementary space in Dr. Heron's proposed capital improvement plan. This year, all but one of our elementary schools have trailers in order to accommodate our current enrollment. You know, logistically, trailers do have their issues. Students are walking to and from buildings outside in the heat, the rain, the cold, and they're noticeably separated from their peers. But as enrollment increases, as you have predicted it will, we'll need even more space. So we already have classes well above the class-sized targets, but since we can't just add a trailer right away, or when we need one, we have no other option but to keep adding students to classes that are already too large. Trailers are a useful stopgap, but they are not a sustainable solution. Building this new space allows WJCC to be proactive instead of reactive, and it gives us an opportunity to make an important investment in the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Ms. Beth Hall?
Good evening. I am a member of the Special Education Advisory Committee. However, I am not here representing them this evening. I am here this evening in support of the 10th elementary school, so we can accommodate the needs of our Bright Beginnings program. Bright Beginnings is a superior program our school system offers. We currently have hundreds of preschool children with special needs and at-risk children on a waiting list who can benefit from this important program. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. I appreciate it. Mr. Chair, that's all our speakers. Thank you. Without any other speakers, I will now close the public hearing. 4.01, the roll. Ms. Aller?
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Dowell?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Ms. Oenby?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here. Thank you. 4.02, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Oenby?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. 5.01, announcement superintendent's report. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My report this evening begins with Jamestown High School's international club's work in building community. Along with their faculty sponsor, Dr. Tamara Priestley, they initiated a community program where English learner students and families from James River Elementary, James Blair Middle, and Jamestown High could come together and share learning experiences and fun. Their collaboration was highly successful, and we look forward to when it starts up again next summer. Also this month, the Griffin School Partners Program was launched, a tutoring program that has WJCC students excited about learning. With nearly 170 William &amp; Mary students volunteering, students at Berkeley, James Blayton, James Blair, Lois Hornsby, and Tuanau are seeing the positive impact. What are our students saying about the program? Devon Meekin said, "If we're learning something hard and I don't understand, the tutors sit down with me and show me how to do it. Then it's easy." Niley Dunn said, "The tutors helped me with my work and my grades have gone up. It's easier working with them because they understand when we're struggling." While virtual during the 2020-21 school year, this semester, the program returned to in-person learning. Also this month, SHIP is conducting their Everything But the Bird Cooking Challenge for students in grades three through eight. Two hundred participants received a cooking kit with Thanksgiving ingredients and were tasked with creating a healthy, original dish. Some of the students' creations included recipes for Thanksgiving au gratin, cranberry sorbet, and Thanksgiving nachos made with sweet potato chips. Lastly, several schools honored our service members with the Veterans Day program, including Stonehouse 4th grade students. The student program was recorded and a link was posted to families and other students to watch. Please enjoy a small excerpt from this program.
Hello and welcome to Stonehouse Elementary's Veterans Day program. This is a long tradition of our school that we unfortunately had to miss last year due to COVID-19 pandemic. 4th grade is honored to bring this tradition back and honor the men and women of the United States Armed Forces. Thank you to all our veterans and active-duty military. We hope you enjoy the show.
If tomorrow all things were gone, I'd work all night, and I'd have to start again with just my children and my eyes. I thank my lucky stars to be living here today, 'cause the fight still stands for freedom, and they can't take that away. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the man who died, who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you in the ever still today, 'cause there ain't no doubt on this land. God bless the USA. And the leaves and the sun, the hills of Tennessee, across the plains of Texas, from sea to shining sea. They're pouring down to Houston, and they're all too late, 'cause it's bright in every American heart, and it's sun-stained. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the man who died, who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you in the ever still today, 'cause there ain't no doubt on this land. God bless the USA. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the man who died, who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you in the ever still today, 'cause there ain't no doubt on this land. God bless the USA.
We want to this evening thank the veterans and service members in our community. We are incredibly grateful for your service every single day. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. That was wonderful. I appreciate you sharing that video with us. Thank you much. Ms. Oenby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to give a brief update. SEAC, the Special Education Advisory Committee, met last week. They provided an orientation for their newest committee members. They considered maybe switching to a face-to-face meeting, or a combination of virtual and face-to-face this year, hoping that might help with their quorum issues. I encourage the SEAC, as I'm stepping off that committee, to continue to be involved in understanding and speaking and supporting our budget and the CIP as well, as well as staying on top of our policies and making recommendations. Their next meeting, they'll discuss goals for the following year. They plan to have some subcommittees break into smaller groups. One thing they'll continue to work on is materials for our libraries that speak to the needs of students with disabilities, as well as, at some point in the future, also providing a list of recommended materials for the public library as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Oenby. Any other... Ms. Young?
Yes, I had the opportunity last Thursday, Wednesday, excuse me, to attend the Career and Tech Committee Advisory Meeting. It was held at Legacy Hall. One of the things that they did at the very beginning was to give the new committee, because many of the members on there are new, an overview of what the purpose of that committee is. They also elected a new Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary, and it was interesting that the CTE teacher from War Hill High School stepped up to be our new Chair, so it's kind of exciting. One of the things that they talked about was how important it is to continue to have community outreach, and hopefully that, right now, they're... Last year, they were creating videos that were available to high school students and their families online, and I suppose anyone else that would like to see them. Right now, job shadowing and internships are still not wanted in the community and businesses because of COVID, and I think that's understandable. The other thing is, they talked about Manufacturing Day, that there would possibly be a Manufacturing Day in the spring, and we had planned for three more meetings between now and the end of the school year, and I think we're off to a great start. The other thing is that I had the opportunity to visit JB Blayton yesterday with the Principal, Ms. Schweitzer, and I had an opportunity to visit. One of the things that came out of our last meeting was the report on Bright Beginnings, and so we visited the Bright Beginnings classroom at JB Blayton. There is nine Bright Beginnings classrooms, and today visited Clara Bird Baker with Principal Mike Hurley, and at that school, there is six Bright Beginnings. There was a marked difference between JB Blayton and Clara Bird Baker. JB Blayton has space and Clara Bird Baker doesn't, and we talked about the impact of what the study showed, and I think a lot of that remains to see what will happen. But it was really fun to walk into classrooms, see students busy and engaged, and the fact that it was a good thing that we're back in school because of the loss of social skills, and it's taken almost a full term, well, it has taken a full term, yet kids to be able to participate again, to feel like they belong again, is all. That was one of the takeaways that I took from that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Any other... Mr. Dowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I was with Ms. Young at the Clara Bird Baker School today, this morning, and I think one of the main takeaways that I took from that visit was Principal Hurley's commitment to reducing the number of quarantines due to COVID exposure, and how he's managing the space and the clock in order to achieve that, understanding that we've got to keep these kids in the classroom as much as possible and reduce that quarantine environment. So I really appreciated that and how he's doing that, in particular around the lunch schedule and even within the classroom. We've heard a lot about teacher burnout and teachers being overextended because what's being asked of them this year, in particular getting so many students that are kind of behind because of the last two years, up to speed and up to speed in a rapid way, and the effect that that's had on teachers. But I can tell you, while that's likely true, of course, that's true, I could not see that on the faces of these students. They seem so well-engaged, just happy to be there, and to credit to Principal Hurley and his management style of that building, the socialization factor that so many students have faced, lack of socialization, just returning to the classroom last year for a short period, that potential trickle over, we did not see that, and Principal Hurley commented on that, that these students, they're smiling again. They're happy to be with their peers. And so I just wanted to commend him and encourage all of our staff and the faculty that are doing the hard work every single day. It makes a difference. I saw that today for myself, and I'm very grateful for that. I'm also grateful, Dr. Heron, for you sharing that video today. It wasn't... It was probably last week, I probably heard it on the radio, and I'm thinking to myself, I wonder if kids still sing that song. I really did. I wonder if people still sing that song, remembering singing that song and understanding what it means at such a young age. So I think that's probably a unique thing in our country right now, where schools are leading like that, and helping our students understand how valuable it is to be an American citizen, and all the privileges that come with that, and then responsibilities as well. And so I appreciate that we get to train that and engender that through song, for doing that in a meaningful way. So thank you for that.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah. I also visited a couple of schools. One of them with Mr. Kelly, and one of them with my colleague, Mrs. Young, at the end down there. I... We went to... Mr. Kelly and I were DJing Montague, and I walked around, and I echo what everybody has been saying, and that is, the students are really happy to be back in school. And I really didn't see any evidence of kids were... have decorated their own masks, and it just didn't seem to be really an issue with them at all. The teachers had masks on as well, and one of the things that I really appreciated, because I know everybody's concerned about how our students have fallen behind, is one of the things that I saw, and I saw it also at Blayton, is a combination of whole class, small group, and even individual attention by teachers, which is the fastest way, a mix of those is the fastest way to get back up to speed. So I really applaud the staff and the teachers there. And then Mrs. Young and I visited Blayton Elementary School, and I have a very special place for, I have to admit, for the principal there, I think is doing a fabulous job. She's soon to become Dr. Schweitzer, but she really... She jumped in with both feet, and you could really tell from walking around the school. She's tired, the teachers are tired, but they all had smiles on their faces, and they were... I think they were all glad to be there at school. And I also very much enjoyed seeing all the Bright Beginnings classrooms there, small numbers of kids. And what really struck me as I walked, because I walked through the rooms, and I looked in cupboards, and I looked underneath cupboards, and the thing that really struck me is that these were genuine preschools, classrooms, and we used to call them nursery schools. They were very much so, like that, because there's always that tendency to, as you move farther down from first grade to kindergarten to preschool, is to make that the lowest level more like the next level up, and I didn't see that, and I really appreciated that. The other thing I would just mention is, watching that video, I haven't heard kids' voices singing in really years now, and I had, you know, aside from the patriotic message there, I got... You get a lump in your throat just listening to those kids standing up, singing away, and feeling pretty good about themselves. So that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. I do appreciate Mr. Holland taking us around DJ Montague yesterday. We went into a classroom from every grade level, and the kids, the kids really looked happy to be there, but I think a couple of school board members looked happy to be in schools, too. So that was good. I got to read "When You Give a Mouse a Cookie" to a random first-grade class, and DJ, maybe? And it was fun. And then I also, I went to Jamestown yesterday, and Mr. Townsend walked me around through Jamestown, too. So that was... I appreciated his time and seeing the students at the high school level, in school and engaged, and was able to sit in on Mrs. in school and engaged and was able to sit in on Mrs. Berry's class for a little bit. And that was, that was pretty fun. The other thing yesterday, the Virginia School Board Association is in Williamsburg this week for their annual convention. They're in, it's a virtual and an in-person convention. You can kind of pick your poison there. I always, this time of year, this this meeting, I always assume that there's a bunch of school board members in their, in their hotel rooms tuned into the local access channel, watching us and and grading how we do. So that's always kind of fun. But yesterday was the delegate assembly, which was virtual for our legislative positions. We'd modified three positions that were that were proposed originally. One was expanding electronic communication for school board meetings. Currently, according to the General Assembly, only two members of a school board can be electronic and participate in a virtual way when you're not in a state of emergency. Other elective bodies, it's only a quorum that's required. So they're, they want to propose to the General Assembly to modify that to give the same latitude to school boards to conduct electronic meetings. School facility construction funds, there was a proposal to the General Assembly for those school districts that have a low composite index to provide them further support for capital construction projects. That was modified to take the local, the local composite index out of that and just ask for the General Assembly to provide more funds for school construction. It was originally proposed by Harrisonburg, who says they have a high school overcrowded by 900 students, which I thought was just kind of incredible. And then the last thing that was put out there was to amend the code to allow local sale, allow for the localities, each locality, whether it be county or city, to increase the local sales tax revenue for the purpose of school construction and major renovation. Right now, it takes an act of the General Assembly for each locality to do that. There is currently nine counties and localities who currently have, who are currently taking, had that option, one of which, interestingly enough, was Gloucester. And once, once the General Assembly passed it, it still has to go to a referendum in that locality. So it's not like it can just automatically be put in place. The representative from Gloucester indicated that their, their, their referendum passed by 60% of the, 65% of the citizens voted to implement an additional to the sales tax to pay off, for cool, school construction. But the Board of Supervisors deflected that money to pay for, pay off debt for student, for construction that had already occurred and versus building new schools, which they thought was kind of a bait and switch kind of thing. So so that was the delegate, delegate assembly. The convention convenes tomorrow and tomorrow, which is Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, at the Lodge. So first time it has been, oops, sorry, first time that it has been in, an in-person component since, since COVID. So kind of excited about that. Anything else from board members? So that takes us to six point.
You forgot the peanut gallery over here.
Julie, Mrs. Humble.
Yeah, don't forget us, just because we're not on the dais. It's going to be hard to follow you because you said a lot of really interesting things about the delegates. So anyway, but I am just going to throw out that Ms. Cook and I went to James Blair and visited there and had a lovely, a lovely visit with them and even, even saw a new science teacher that the kids were programming these little glow balls that were going helter-skelter all over the floor. But it was really cool to watch everyone doing that and kind of hearing her perspective of how James Blair was slowly getting to the actual project-based learning that the classrooms were designed to do and the challenges with that. We also heard that the struggle is real with our middle schools. We had been to Berkeley previously and then with James Blair, that the teachers really are feeling the need for some kind of breaks with additional planning time. So that that was something I just wanted to say, we we hear the frustrations and and the fact that there's very few, there's very few substitutes to go around. The good news is that as of our visit, James Blair had zero students out with COVID or faculty out with COVID. So that was just like a real, a real benefit to know that everyone's doing the learning, continuing the learning as much as possible. And just like my colleague said, the, the place was just a total buzz with kids going back and forth and changing classes. And they, they were very, very happy to be in school. Oh, and one final thing, there was one teacher, Ms. Rachel Moore, who introduced Ms. Cook and I to her, her fill the filter contraption, where she made a homemade filtration unit for her classroom to, to improve the air quality for her. So it was just kind of fun to see that. And and we were both sent the instructions if we wanted to do it in our own homes. So, so anyway, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Humble. Any other comments from board members? Six point zero one, public comment. Mr. Dow.
I apologize for that. Prior to the start of this meeting, these speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. We ask that there are not be any applauding or other types of demonstrations during these presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated one minute and 30 seconds to make their presentation, and the Board asks that you respect this time limitation and that, that, and please be reminded that there is, that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Our first speaker is Mr. Jay Eversen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jay Eversen, 6923, Chancery Lane. Last month, I came and spoke on the CIP. And I, when I was speaking, I referred to average people such as come here tonight, elementary school is K through five. And later in the meeting, on the dais, it was pointed out that the Department of Education sees elementary schools as pre-K to five. I'm well aware of that. With 90 seconds, it's very difficult to get everything in that you want to say, say. I understand that pre-K went from Social Services Department to the Department of Education. I've never disputed that pre-K kids aren't elementary school kids. I was just stating what I thought was the obvious, that most people think that a elementary school is K through five. And as for that video, that was absolutely incredible, but kind of chills in my, up my back. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Sorry about the confusion there, Jay, with the public hearing. I said, sorry about the.
I didn't realize.
No worries. Ms. Robin Pavlosky.
As a former Air Force veteran, I, as a Air Force veteran, I really appreciated the performance of the children. That really touched my heart. So I agree with you on that. I'm speaking tonight, my name is Robin Pavlosky. I'm speaking tonight because I'm against the vaccine clinics being held at the schools. Dr. Toby Rogers, who is a risk benefit effort, expert, says, according to a scientific peer reviewed article, like the Kostoff paper, there are many, this is just one, the current administration's COVID vaccination plan would kill 5,248 children via the Pfizer mRNA shots in order to save 45 children from dying. According to this paper and others, anyone under 35, the chances of death are very small. The younger you are, the less chance you have of dying. Pfizer's own study showed four times the deaths from cardiac arrest in the group that received vaccinations. And I, and I'm just wondering, what is the reason we're allowing these clinics to operate near schools? Is this a funding connection? By allowing these clinics on school grounds, you are culpable in the harm that we will probably see. I know I've seen a lot of, talked to a lot of people that have had harm from the vaccines, and I'm really concerned about it. It's a nationwide issue. Children are our most valuable resource. We must think about every decision we make and look into why we are making these. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pavlosky, and thank you for your service. That's, thank you very much. Toby Wiseman.
Good evening, school board members, board and, board members and Chair and Superintendent. I'm here tonight about the vaccine clinic being offered at James Blair this Saturday. Did you know that the WHO records potential side effects of the vaccine topping at two and a half million in the last year compared to 23 other vaccines and medications distributed between 1968 and 2021? The CDC reporting 30,000 plus spontaneous reports of hospitalization and or deaths among the fully vaxxed. For a biologic that is still experimental and for which there is no vax developer liability for injuries, our most defenseless population is being endangered. Does that seem compassionate or ethical? FDA member Eric Rubin acknowledged safety studies were too small and brief, but that we're never going to learn how safe the vax is unless we start giving it. That's just the way it goes. Do you agree with that reckless statement? British Medical Journal researchers recently posed, should society be considering vaccinating healthy kids, subjecting them to any risk, not for the purpose of benefiting them, but to protect adults? Among 28 million five to 11-year-olds, the CDC records 66 COVID deaths ending this past October, less than those who died from the flu in 2019. And the risk of myocarditis has already been shared with the last speaker. Please consider if you want to be seen as complicit in what is already proving to be disaster and a dirge on how we are treating our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiseman. Ms. Susan Franz.
Good evening, Susan Franz. Good evening, Board. My comments concern the mRNA injection clinic scheduled for Saturday at James Blair Middle School, specifically as it relates to the five to 11-year-olds. Schools should not be involved in health care except for those medical situations occurring during the school day. The injection for five to 11-year-olds is not a fully approved FDA drug. It is only allowed for injection under emergency use authorization. There have been no long-term studies done on this age group. The injection contains polyethylene glycol. 70% of the population is allergic to this poison. Many other toxins are in the injection as well. My question is this, what is the motivation for conducting these clinics? My guess is that federal and state dollars are attached to your participation. In conclusion, consider carefully what you are doing because you may be directly participating and seriously damaging the health of our children. This may be a punishable offense at some point in the future. Finally, I loved seeing the song in, in response to Veterans Day, but it broke my heart to see kids singing about freedom with a mask on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Franz. Smith. Ms. Anne Marie Smith.
Something a little different today, a poem to express what I want to say. Why are we vaccinating kids at school? To convince everyone that it's cool? This is a shot that can maim and kill, except this shot is not from a gun or a pill. Is it equitable, you say, to offer these? Then what about all the other disease? How about polio, measles, mumps and rubella? These shots are properly supervised by a doctor fella, a pediatric doctor that knows the child's history, who has been trained and trusted as evident by his degree. Why is a local drug pharmacy participating? Could it be the $40 profit per kid is baiting? There is no recourse for kids injured by this vaccine. The fact that we are told FDA equals EUA is obscene. You see, the FDA co-manartie is not being made. Ask to see the vial and box yourself. It says EUA. Return to teaching the basic learning tools. Stop administering vaccines in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Rachel Rudis.
I am speaking to you as a middle school history teacher and your 2020-21 Rookie Teacher of the Year. I'm speaking tonight because our teachers and students need your support. The amount of planning time that we receive during our contractual hours is not enough to complete all of our job responsibilities adequately. We love our jobs and we love our students more than life, but we are drowning. We are frustrated. I know what I can do to create meaningful, engaging lessons for our students, and yet we are not given enough time to create and implement these resources. As frustrating as it is for us to lose this time, it is impacting our children the most. Students are losing the opportunity to engage in challenging and meaningful learning experiences. Previously, we were able to plan lessons and projects alongside students, increasing engagement to the fullest extent. I hosted lunches where students could play games together in an informal space that created a deeper learning community. This year, we hardly have time to keep up with daily grading, let alone create innovative lessons and check in on our students in the ways that they need. As we continue to lose planning time, we are required to complete these responsibilities in our own time. Just this week, I spent hours in the evenings grading standardized assessments. I have colleagues with children who must plan at 5:30 in the morning on their Saturdays or midnight on school nights. We need this time during our contractual hours. I urge you to consider adding additional planning days and periods into the calendar, both this year and next year. If we are going to serve our community in the best way possible, this is what our teachers and students truly need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rudis. Ms. Jillian Sheldon.
My name is Jillian Sheldon. I've taught for WJCC schools for over 16 years, and I've had some of your children in my classroom. I have many friends throughout the division, teaching in every level of school. My own kids attend WJCC schools. Every single teacher that I speak to is exhausted and feeling burnout. At the middle school level specifically, we lost one planning and now have two or three preps. This leaves teachers with little to no time to collaborate, give essential and timely feedback on our students' work, communicate with parents, differentiate our lessons, attend IEP and 504 meetings. Last year, we fortunately had Friday built into the planning schedule. This year has shown that the current schedule with our teaching requirements are not sustainable. I fear we are only going to lose more quality, talented teachers to the surrounding districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sheldon. If you had one of my children, I apologize. Mr. John Slokovich.
I think perhaps I, along with others, were not clear during our previous engagements, but I'm asking you now, have, have you guys and the JCC community accepted federal grants to fund our children's education? Have these grants made clear stipulations that CRT, SEL, DMV, whatever acronym you want to associate with the type of teaching which is based on a children's race to be spread through, spread through our classrooms? Also, has grant money stipulated that our children's, our children continue to be masked through 2023 school year? What other stipulations have you agreed upon without the consent of our community? What earmarks are there for holding injection clinics? I would, I would really appreciate an answer, and one, one word answers with suffice, yes or no, have you accepted these? We should learn a great deal from this previous election. McAfee lost not because of money. He spent, I don't know, 10 times more than Yonkin. He was not an outsider. He was an incumbent, and his party was holding the office he looked to held. He didn't lose because of his supporters. He had the most popular two-term president on his rallies, and he had the most popular president ever, 750 million votes. president ever, 750 million votes. I don't know how many he got. But it was because of 12 words that facilitated the loss, and those 12 words were, "I don't think parents should be telling schools what they should teach." I yield back my time to Brandon.
Ms. Deborah Osborne, I believe.
Yep. It could be Osborne.
Good evening. My name's Deborah Ogden, and I am a social studies teacher at Hornsby Middle School. This is my 30th year of teaching, 24 years with WJCC schools. I too, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Hornsby, have had your children in my classroom, and they were good kids. But they had a tough teacher.
Good.
Um, I'm here too with a concern about our move from a middle school concept to a junior high concept, and that's exactly what we've done. And there was a reason middle school was created, so that you can meet the special needs of children at that age. I can't tell you how many times out in public, when people find out you're a teacher, they thank you for your service, and when they find out that you teach middle school, they say, "God bless you." Um, I love middle school kids. That is my niche. I did two years of elementary, and I realized that playground duty was not my thing. But I am concerned about our schedule, and as Ms. Rudis said earlier, there is no time to do the things. We are being required to do triple, if sometimes quadruple, with less time to do it in. I don't think you realize how much time it takes to publish in Canvas daily. Let's be ready for our kids. It's tough, and teachers are more than burned out. Teachers are miserable. I love what I do. I'm retiring after this year. I wish you all well, and I hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogden, for everything you do.
Ms. Kelly Crumpler. I apologize if that's wrong.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Kelly Crumpler. This is my 30th year teaching middle school, my 27th year here in the county. Although it's 30 years, this feels like the very first year I'm teaching, with the weight of everything and the, as little time as we have. I have five classes, two preps, and one planning. And I am a collaborative teacher, so I attend many IEP meetings, many 504 meetings, many SAP meetings. And now with a math middle school, I'm with the CTT, and a lot of these meetings are now being held after school. My planning is just trying to get ready for the very next day, much less plan for the next week. It is very difficult. I loved last year with having the Fridays to plan to meet with our PLC. We don't have common plannings now, so sometimes I'm texting with my other math colleagues to try to plan for just the very next couple days. Sometimes we're standing in the hallway during bus duty, just to try to figure out, what are we doing tomorrow? When are we going to give a quiz? What do you think? Do you think we should change it? It's just, it's a lot. And I'm trying to really do the same quality job I've been doing all these 30 years, and it's very hard to do. But I love what I do. I want to keep doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crumpler.
Ms. Susan Bearfield.
Good evening, Chairman Kelly, esteemed members of the Board and Dr. Heron. My name is Susan Bearfield, and I'm part of the Executive Board of the Williamsburg James City Education Association and Special Education Teacher. I stand before you to address the requirements that were put on WJCC staff and what everyone anticipated was going to be another unprecedented year. I am disappointed that not only the same demands were expected of teachers, but additional ones, including a book study CTT and teaching to a no homework policy, were added as well, although the book study was, pause, thank you, Dr. Heron. We also dealt with three schedule changes in the first few weeks, not to mention the shortage of bus drivers and subs that affected us. While the public was voicing their opinion about what we were reading, us as teachers looked at it as the fact we had to do a book study at all. While each level has its challenges, middle school schedule has drastically changed. Teachers lost a planning period prior to COVID but didn't feel the effects until this year. Teachers are teaching five class periods in multiple grade levels, and no grade levels have the same team planning. Because of this, our faculty, grade level, and content level meetings are held at least twice a month after school during non-contract hours. This is not occurring at the elementary or high school level. Yet we are expected to help students adapt back to normal and get them caught up. I ask you, when is that supposed to happen? Through all of this, let's not forget adapting to changes that address a pandemic going on. I also ask you to reconsider adding additional teacher work and PD days to the calendar. We are the only, one of the only districts in the area with the least amount of teacher institute days on the regular school calendar, yet other districts found additional days to give them off, not to mention ranking ninth in the area master's degree salaries. How are you supposed to draw new and good quality staff?
Thank you, Ms. Bearfield.
Ms. Laura Cottle.
Good evening. After many spoke on CRT last month, one board member said she was, this wasn't an issue in our school system and that we were confused. Perhaps member of the, members of the board are confused. No one said that the school division has bought a program with the name Critical Race Theory on it. This radical theory that seeks to categorize white as oppressors and black and brown as oppressed has been around since 1970 and encompasses a collection of radical ideas that paint our nation through a lens of race only, including theories that are not based on evidence or data like white privilege, systemic racism, white fragility, capitalism as the root of all evil, and segregation as a good thing, on and on. These are all under the umbrella of Critical Race Theory. Our students are being indoctrinated with these radical destructive theories, and you know it. Last year, my son was given a white privilege survey as part of an English assignment. Just two weeks ago, he was encouraged to take surveys about implicit bias and then given a disturbing lesson I have on film. I've got parts of that video. After the first incident, I sent letters to the superintendent, the vice superintendents, and met with, and to every principal in this entire county. I, high school principal, that is. I requested multiple meetings with two principals and the curriculum coordinator for English in our school system. They refused to tell parents what was going on, twice. Why? This is happening in our schools, yet you profess that indoctrination is against school policy and that you don't endorse CRT. One of two things is going on here. Either you don't know this is happening because of negligence, or you know it's happening and you're trying to hide it. Either way, this board owes parents an explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cottle.
Mr. Travis Cottle.
Travis Cottle.
Can you keep your mask up, please? Thank you.
I'm Travis Cottle. I'm a student at Jamestown High School. I'm going to read to you from your student code, student code of conduct. So students have a right to a public education unimpaired because of gender, race, religion, national origin, or disability. I, along with many of, many other students, have applied for medical exemptions and religious exemptions from this mask mandate, and they have all been denied. This is not only a violation of the US Constitution, but your own policy, and I ask you to change it. And whatever good you think you're doing with this mask mandate is totally undermined by what happens at lunch, when we all take our mask off for a half hour. According to your logic and your policy, if I have my mask on my nose like this in a classroom, I'm considered a danger to the students. But as soon as I enter the cafeteria, it's totally fine. How does that make any sense? Does COVID just disappear when lunch comes around for that half hour, but then I got to put it back on when I enter the classroom? Explain to me how that makes any sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cottle.
Beverly Hathaway. Ms. Beverly Hathaway.
Hello, I'm Beverly Hathaway. I'm a reading recovery teacher at Norwich Elementary, and I'm a lifelong resident of Williamsburg. And actually, my family has been here since the early 1800s. So I care very deeply about the children and the families of this community, and that's why I've chosen to speak this evening. And I want to address several concerns about the language arts program. There are many teachers who have questions about language arts decision-making at central office regarding the use of decodable text at the elementary level. Some leadership members believe that all children should learn to use decodable text, to learn to read using decodable text. In other words, children need a one-size-fits-all decodable reading program like Walpool McKenna. These decisions are being made without collaboration from the special education and ELL departments. It's important that collaborative decisions occur at central office, just as we, as educators, collaborate with ELL, speech, and special education teachers to meet the needs of our students on a daily basis. The decision, the division has spent thousands of dollars on excellent guided reading resources for classroom teachers. Teachers are asking for side-by-side coaching help in the classroom. Serve this help. And lastly, I ask that you not spend money on programs like Walpool McKenna. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hathaway.
Ms. Tanya Whitaker.
My name is Tanya. I was born and raised in Germany, came to America when I was 14. I have been in James City County for the last almost 20 years, and I have a 16-year-old in your school district. CRT is real. I did bring some copies of documents. I will show a school assignment that I had called out to the principal, the school teacher, and the counselor. It was not addressed, and instead it was just changed a little bit because we want to take out the criminal being used in the assignment. The equity program that you're advertising online, I have some site notes on it so you can see how stupid this sounds, as well as the 1776 report. Also, really silly, I got to page 10, didn't want to finish after that. I don't know how you can teach this stuff because it's unteachable. Also, whoever wrote it needs to go back to English class, apparently. English is not my first language, so I can say this is stupid. It's obviously an issue. I did make a couple notes, just seeing how much time I have. Let me see, the, I did want to mention that the kids need an industrial-style microwave in their cafeteria. I'm not sure why there's a normal microwave being used like you would have at your home. It makes a huge difference for the kids. The free lunch that they had during the COVID, when it was getting delivered, is, was absolutely disgusting. The food preparation does matter, so how you prepare will make it taste different. Thank you.
Can you?
I will leave it with you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Read my mind. Ms. Phyllis Seesman.
Good evening. As a review, I had trouble last time. I'm asking for an audit of the curriculum in all grade levels and the teaching of the Black experience in American history to debunk the lie that is being told in this culture that we don't teach Black history and that whites, which are all white supremists, do not want Black history taught. So I'd like to know if you will do that audit. Secondly, the school board needs a policy to be followed when teachers, teachers include a racial prism in their classroom teaching. There's a lot of empirical, empirical evidence, as we've heard tonight, that this is being done. If parents make it known to the school system that their child is being taught racial division or components of CRT, which that is, it needs to go, that information needs to go beyond the school administrator, and it needs to come to the school board so that you know that it's happening, and that way you'll be responsible as well. So I want a process where all information of that is sent from the school administrator and is required to do so to the school board. A recent study of different age groups, I'm not going to finish. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Seesman.
Mr. Hassan Lamott.
Hassan Lamott, good evening. You stated in the past that this school board is a representative body, which raises these questions. Who does the school board actually represent, and whose interests do the school boards actually serve? The school board would answer these questions, you'd likely say that they represent the community at large and serve their interests, but your recent inactions, inactions make it clear that this board, for the most part, exists to serve its own interests. This board has stated that the comments we, as citizens, make, these meetings represent a minority opinion. Let's say for argument's sake that it is a minority opinion. I'm not conceding that it is, just saying for argument's sake, let's say that it is. Does having a minority opinion somehow diminish or nullify the actual tenets or merits of that opinion? I don't think so. This board has repeatedly mischaracterized and misrepresented the sentiments of those making public comments at these board meetings. This board makes it a point to say that it won't offer direct responses or feedback to the questions or comments we make in this public forum, yet the board has no issues publicly making negative and accusatory remarks about us after we leave the school board meetings. Members of this school board even went as far as to provide comments that recently appeared in a local newspaper article. Those comments were clearly used as a vehicle to further invalidate and disregard our concerns. I know you guys can do better. Need to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamott. Other speakers, Mr. Herron. Excellent, thank you very much. 7.01 Review Program of Studies 2022-2023. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're pleased this evening to present the Program of Studies for 2022-2023, and Ms. Walters is here to present the information this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. It is my pleasure to present the Program of Studies for 2022-2023 to you tonight. Tonight's proposed revisions and updates reflect the continuing goal of making WJCC's Program of Studies more user-friendly and relevant as students and families consider which courses, programs, and options offer the best path toward achieving their goals. As you can see here, the Program of Studies aligns with WJCC's strategic plan to elevate beyond excellence and specifically support Schools 1, 2, and 3. Before we begin, I would like to thank the many different groups and stakeholders who met, reviewed information, and provided input over the last few months to develop the Program of Studies proposed this evening. I would also like to note that any new courses added to the Program of Studies went through the New Course Proposal Process, which includes an interdisciplinary committee review and considers impacts on staffing, facilities, and other courses within the content area. Over the past few years, we have been working to make thorough and necessary updates to the Program of Studies to continue on our path of making the Program of Studies a user-friendly tool for students and families that outlines the courses and content available within WJCC schools. You will see through this presentation tonight that due to these many changes and updates in recent years, the proposed Program of Studies has fewer necessary changes and updates for the 2022-2023 school year. Overall changes and updates to the Program of Studies include updating the School Board Member Section and one new high school CTE course to enhance our Member Section and one new high school CTE course to enhance our offerings in this area. Additionally, the updated New Horizons CTE and Governor's School Program information will be updated within our Program of Studies once we received an approved copy from their board. I will move through the changes and updates being proposed for the Program of Studies this evening, and you will find these in summary form within the summary of changes chart provided to you. This chart identifies all proposed changes for the Program of Studies this year and includes the page where you will find each of these changes. If a page is not included within this chart, then no change is being proposed for that page within the Program of Studies for 2022-2023. I'd like to begin on Page Two, the Middle School Program. Within this section, we have updated the gifted education information to align with the new WJCC Board-approved Gifted Education Local Plan. Within this section, we have also updated the honors-level coursework description to provide a more thorough description of honors-level English and remove the previous language related to additional steps required for enrollment in these courses, as we no longer have enrollment requirements for honors-level English. The accelerated math requirements were updated to reflect the change in total points required from 85 to 80 to align with our updated procedures. Also, within the Middle School Program section, we updated the Virginia State Assessments portion to reflect the current structure of state assessments at the middle school level based on changes from the Virginia Department of Education. Within the High School Program section of the Program of Studies, beginning on Page Four, there were changes and updates made to two sections this year. First, the Diploma Seal Recognition section outlines the requirements for all the diploma seals available to earn by graduating seniors. Within this section, there were necessary updates to requirements needed for the following seals based on alignment with the Virginia Department of Education requirements: the State Board of Education seal, the Governor's seal, the State Board of Education's Career and Technical Education seal, the State Board of Education's seal for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, and the State Board of Education's Advanced Mathematics and Technology seal. Under the Virtual Learning section of the Program of Studies on Page 12, we have added the WJCC Schools Virtual Academy and the description for this option. Also, within this section, we updated the link available for the multi-division online providers, as the previous link was no longer valid. This concludes the overall updates and revisions for the proposed Program of Studies. I will now move on to share specific updates to course offerings and descriptions at the secondary level. This year, there were no changes or additions made to middle school courses and course We would like to begin the high school course updates on Page 24 of the Program of Studies. As a reminder, you may follow along with these changes on the summary of changes chart provided to you as a quick reference guide. Updates to the English section of the Program of Studies include language to indicate that students in English 10 or honors English 10 will prepare to take the writing SOL at the end of the course. We also added language to English 11 and honors English 11, indicating that through these courses, students will prepare to take the reading SOL at the end of the course. This language is added to provide clarity within the English offerings on when students would take these assessments. Also, within the English section, we removed language that was previously listed within the AP English Literature course, indicating extensive summer assignments attached to this course. This update was made to reflect the current practice for the course, which does not include summer assignments. In the Mathematics section, beginning on Page 31, we updated the language related to the lab courses for Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. The new language indicates that students may be concurrently enrolled in the lab section to limit confusion related to whether or not the lab course was a required concurrent enrollment. In the Social Studies section, beginning on Page 39, the course descriptions for AP US History, AP European History, and AP Psychology were updated to add language to indicate that these courses prepare students for the AP exam in that content area. This language was added to provide consistency in course descriptions. This year, we have added one new course within the proposed Program of Studies. This course, Veterinary Science II, can be found on Page 54 and is a CTE course that is the second course in a sequence combined with Veterinary Science I, which was added last school year and is being taught for the first time this school year. In Veterinary Science II, students will expand their knowledge of animal science and the care of animals, including animal structure and function, microbes and disease prevention, and genetics and breeding. This course may include on-the-job clinical instruction coordinated by the instructor in veterinary offices or animal clinics. This concludes the updates to course offerings and descriptions. I would now like to share the course request timeline for the 2022-2023 school year. By adjusting our proposal of the Program of Studies to earlier in the school year, we're working towards our goal of identifying and solidifying student requests earlier in the year. Beginning in January, when we return from winter break, school counselors will begin classroom and individual planning sessions with all of our rising sixth through 12th grade students. Last year, you may recall that we offered our course planning and curriculum fair virtually, which also provided increased access for all families who may have previously not been able to attend in person. This year, we intend to continue with that format, and we'll be providing access to the Virtual Course Planning and Curriculum Fair the week of January 10, 2022. As was done last year, we will continue to have a method available for students and families to submit questions, which will be answered by the appropriate team member. Also, in January, school counselors will be facilitating transition planning by providing lessons for all of their feeder schools. Our course request window for the 2022-2023 school year will open online for all rising sixth through 12th graders and their families on January 18 and close on February 4. This concludes my presentation of the Program of Studies for 2022-2023. I thank you for your time.
Thank you much. Questions from board members, Mrs. Owenby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few questions and some comments, too. I do like that the guide is very helpful for us as we go through the Program of Studies and then listening to your presentation. I do like bumping up the timeline for course request. I know that, that in the past and currently, we would close the window and then go away from spring break. Students and families could kind of talk some more about courses that they selected, and then the window would reopen after spring break, and they can make final adjustments. Will that continue to happen?
We are working on about a three-week earlier timeframe. We will still close the window. We will still provide families, students and families with what we currently have and give them an opportunity to make any changes to what they've requested, but we are on track to finish earlier, which will also help with staffing and recruitment and hiring.
Okay, I appreciate that. A couple more comments and questions. So, in looking at the world languages, I know several years ago, there was a conversation about reexamining that and looking at kind of how that tracked from middle school to high school, and just wondered where, where we are with, with, with that.
We continue to have conversations and make sure that we are aligning our courses in the most appropriate way for our students. We are not at a place to present any changes for that for this coming year, but we are, of course, still having those conversations.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then, I am a fan of early college, having my own student participate in that, and what was looking, I always look to make sure it's still there, and we're going to do it because I think it's wonderful. But we talk about the concurrent, the opportunity for students to take community college course, courses concurrently as a junior or senior, and then a few paragraphs later, bullet points later, we talk about early college. And I just wondered, for families who aren't familiar with early college or concurrent, like, is that confusing? Because we don't really make it clear that they're two separate things? Are they two separate things? I was just...
They are, they are two separate things.
Right.
But that's great feedback to have, and of course, we are always looking at ways that we can ensure that all families are aware and understand all the opportunities available, early college being one of them, and any ways that we can enhance that this year to make sure that our families are aware of what's available for them.
Yeah, for me, it was a little fuzzy between those two, two bullet points. And then, this, this doesn't speak specifically to the Program of Studies, but I know that we made the shift to year-long block classes, and I've gotten a lot of feedback from families, particularly this year more so than last year. It's, it's still a difficult transition for many kids, particularly those that are juniors and seniors this year who had experienced the block, the year-long, or the semester block schedule. So has there been any conversation or about where examining and kind of critiquing where we're at with that switch?
Sure. We are continuing to look at data, listen to stakeholder feedback, and evaluate before we make any sort of decisions, just as we do with any change. But yes, those conversations are still happening.
Okay, and then lastly, the academic enrichment period that we used to have at the high school level went by the wayside, and again, I've heard feedback from students as well as families who are missing that and feel like they need that to stay on top of all of their coursework, particularly now that they're taking eight classes simultaneously instead of taking four in the, in the fall and four in the spring.
I will be sure to include that in the discussions that we have. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are you sure you're done?
I, I might have one more. No, I'm kidding.
Okay, Ms. Cook?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to commend you on the Virtual Curriculum Fair. That has been very helpful, and, and I really appreciate it. I don't really have any questions. I think this is very good, and I appreciate the timeline and all the work that goes into this. But just a couple of comments. First, I hope that, that particularly with our rapid acceleration to an online learning environment and building that capability, that, that this Program of Studies has been able to accommodate students who maybe wanted to take a course that made in another high school but didn't make in their high school. So, you know, I hope that that has opened those opportunities. I, I expressed concern last year, and I remain concerned about the math, progressing through math and not being able to take AB and BC calculus because of the switch to year-long. And so, I just, I think that could potentially negatively impact some of our students who want to accelerate all the way through math, particularly if they want to take calculus, AB, and then BC. They're no longer able to, they can't fit it in throughout their high school career. And then, I'm also curious about the intersection between the, you know, wonderful body of classes that we offer and then also graduation requirements and whether or not there is, there's going to be eventually a shift in the number of classes offered per year, you know, because of the shift in graduation requirements. And, and my last comment is that, you know, with a lot of what we teach, there are sort of summative assessments at the end, and, and we get a good sense of whether students learned what they were supposed to learn. And that is also true for the large number of AP courses that we offer, but because students aren't required to take those courses, we don't have a strong sense of whether those students learned what they were supposed to learn in that class. And I, and I know there's an argument for not, not forcing everyone to take the AP test because some kids who don't take it seriously don't try, and therefore, it's not an accurate, accurate assessment anyway. So I get that, but I do, I do worry about the difference in quality of AP courses across our divisions. So, anyway, I just wanted to make this.
For that feedback.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Ms. Hummel?
Did you, Young want to go before me?
She can, Ms. Young.
I don't mind going. I, I just had a question about, I have two questions. First of all, you mentioned about the concurrent, this on Page 31, about the concurrent lab with the class. Are the labs required?
So currently, all of our Algebra I classes do have a required lab with them when they're taught at the high school level. With this new structure, we are identifying that there are times where a lab may not be required, but we also value the additional support that the lab provides. So for our Algebra II courses, the way the Program of Studies currently reads is that it does read that it is required. What we are doing is making it not a requirement. Currently, in not all and all buildings, excuse me, not in all buildings, do we teach Algebra II with the lab in all sections. So we adjusted the language here to align with our practice in the buildings, that for geometry and Algebra II, it is not a requirement to take both, but we do have many sections where that is needed to be sure that we're offering the support we need for students. And we are moving into reevaluating and updating the Algebra I practices for next school year.
Okay, as a parent, when you're making, helping your child make these decisions, how are they going to know whether or not their child needs a lab or not if it's not required?
We will be communicating that with families.
Okay, because, I mean, I think that's kind of dangerous to, to, well, I'll leave that up to you, but I think it would be better if it's required, it's just required. If it's not, it's not. And then on Page 26, for the Advanced Placement of English Literature and Composition Class, when my, my kids took AP, before they took it, there was extensive summer reading. I see that requirement has been removed. Is that still part of the AP program or not?
I may let Ms. Brand answer that specifically. I will say that the College Board does provide the curriculum, but it's not necessary to have summer assignments for all AP classes.
Dr. Worley's going to address that for us.
I was just going to add that we have been working on evaluating AP courses for a couple of years, and one of the things from some of our AP HAC committees, one of, some of the recommendations, were to remove barriers and make sure that all students had access and that we wouldn't get hung up on something keeping them from being eligible to participate in the course. And so that's how we arrived at some of that decision. It's not a requirement. Some students do do things on their own. We have some things that they could access over the summer, but it's not a hard requirement to take the course.
I guess, Dr. Worley, it goes back to my question, like, like, if you, I mean, it says it's not required, but what if a student wanted to know, I mean, our, our book list, I mean, are they given to students that are potential students in advanced placement so that if they want to, they can do?
Absolutely. And we do communicate, teachers communicate that thing, that in their homeschools, and I can work with Ms. Brand to make sure it's division-wide communicated as well. They can have access to stuff over the summer if they would like to.
Okay, because, yeah, I just don't like things being dumied down. Thank you.
So my question is just kind of a logistics one for the transition visits. Yes. A parent has both the ability to either come in and meet with the counselor with their child?
Yes.
Face-to-face or Zoom meeting? Is that the thing? So, in either case, they've got the same personalized experience in that transition meeting?
Yes, and I would say that with the introduction of Zoom, it is now, more parents are able to participate because that is easier for them to access than perhaps coming in person to school, but both options are available.
Yeah, great, okay, so that was great. And then my other question was veterinary and science, like, like, what precipitated adding that to, is, was it based on just interest level among the students themselves? Do we have some kind of an external expert that we're taking advantage of? Like, what, what's the story?
Where did that come from? Where's the story? Sure. So we introduced Veterinary Science I this school year, so as a natural progression, we did propose and add Veterinary Science II. The initial request for the Vet Science courses came from student interests. We combined with a teacher who has many years of experience teaching the course, and we've been able to offer two sections of it, one in two, in two different buildings this school year because of student interest.
Okay, so that would be, what schools do we know?
Lafayette and War Hill both have a section.
And then if a student at Jamestown would be interested in it?
So we have been able to utilize a lot this year. Another blessing of the virtual environment is some of our students have been able to, if it works with their schedule, owl in to courses in other buildings. Yes, it's, it's an option.
Okay, great, because, I mean, I can see, that's always been an issue for some, for some of our schools, right? That have lower enrollments and just the logistics with the buses and all that stuff. So I do know that that's more work on the teachers, so I guess I'm cognizant of that as well, just to balance out the difficulty of teaching to two different audiences. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I just, I've got a question, because I've, I've gone to the, to the Department of Edit at the, at the state, some of the things that they have posted up there. A question I have is, I'm looking at history, sociology, psychology... A question I have is, I'm looking at history, sociology, psychology, politics, I can see, okay, maybe that's in with government. Where do those fit in? I mean, can you not have a cluster where you have history and sociology together? I'm just, especially history, you know, obviously from comments made tonight, it's a very important area that you could specialize in, but I don't know which, where would you put that? Would that be an elective? How's that work?
I apologize because I'm not crystal clear on your question. How would a sociology course work or just a history?
Yeah, I'm more concerned, yeah, sociology, but I'm actually more concerned about the history.
So there are history requirements for a diploma to graduate. For an advanced diploma, students need to have four credits of history. Government is a requirement, and Virginia U.S. history is a requirement. Virginia U.S. history is taken in the junior year typically and government in the senior year. And then within the ninth grade and 10th grade year, if they're going for an advanced diploma, they need four total credits. So out of those two years, they typically either take World History II, World History I, World Geography. There's a selection that they can choose from that would count towards that. A sociology course is an elective. It doesn't count as a core requirement within history, but there is a history requirement to graduate.
I'm just, you know, I'm, you know, I understand the rationale for the clusters, and I know it's coming from the Virginia Department of Ed, but I'm wondering, is it possible for a student to design their own cluster? Or are we limited to these, you know, I mean, there are 17 clusters. My God, there's obviously, it'd be twice as many clusters, but.
Career clusters, you mean?
Yeah. Well, the ones that I'm looking at, I'm looking at Virginia's 17-career
Yes.
clusters. And I guess the question I have is, can you design your own? Or can we add to the 17?
So the 17-career clusters are recognized throughout the entire state. A student, while they can't design their own career cluster, they can design their own course program. So as long as they meet the diploma requirements, which is one of the reasons why we have so many extensive options, if they have a strong affinity or interest in history, they can take psychology for their electives. They can take some of the elective offerings that we have within that content area.
Do they still have to identify a career cluster?
Well, psychology would fall under human services, so.
So that would be their cluster?
These courses live within those 17 clusters.
I just, it always strikes me that, and we're following the state, so I, you know, I understand that, that we're trying to squeeze. These seem somewhat arbitrary, and I know of students who are perfectly capable of designing really interesting career clusters because they don't really see a cluster here that they're particularly interested in. So I'm just, I'm just wondering about that. So you have to pick one of these anyway.
But within each cluster, we can think of the cluster as an umbrella.
I know.
There are so many, many, many careers that fall within those clusters
Right.
that we could meet with a student, and they can tell us what they'd like to do, and we can match it to one of those 17 without having to create a new one.
Okay. No, I'm not satisfied with that, but I understand, you know, why we're, why I almost want to say restricted or limited by that, but I just, and I've always thought that about, especially the high school curriculum, is, you know, if you don't take this course here this semester, you're going to be stuck farther on, it's, it is arbitrary, and, well, that course isn't going to be offered next semester or whatever it might be. So I guess I always opt in the direction of, you know, trying to take something that's fairly rigid and do something creative with it. And what you're telling me is, you know, a guidance counselor at a high school level can be creative that way within the context of one of the career clusters. That's really what you're saying.
Yes. Our school counselors can work with students to help them identify which career cluster their career interest falls under.
So it is actually possible to include a number of different courses because of the interest of the student that, and for the most part, they fit into this particular, a particular cluster.
Yes. Yeah, we could, we can find a career cluster that matches the student's interest.
I just, all, I know, especially for those who are going to go on to college, it's, there is far more freedom at the college level in designing or deciding on what courses you're going to take, what you're going to major in, because there's no, this is, you have to, you know, this is what you have to do, and you have to, there's some of that, but, so I hope we're preparing them for that as well, that they have to, you know, that there is going to be a lot more freedom in that area once you, you know, once they get to college. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Ms. Owenby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess just to build on Dr. Beers' comments, that students aren't required to select an employment cluster. That's really just a planning tool
Correct.
for them
Yes.
to have an understanding of
Yes.
where their likes and dislikes. So, and so most of the courses that students are required to take are driven by the State Board of Education. And then there's, and then there's electives within that.
Correct. The electives are where, well, not all interest, because some students have strong interest in math or history, but that's where there's more flexibility as far as what they can take as compared to English or your core content areas.
Right. And just wanted to clarify that they don't have to select a cluster, that's just a planning tool.
Correct. We do identify one through the academic and career planning tool, but it is not, you don't have to define one in ninth grade and follow that for four years.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I guess, that sounds like a different answer, but it.
Dr. Beers, from what I understand, a student may be interested in two different career clusters, and they may be pulling electives from two different places, so they're not put in a box and stuck there. They actually do a flexibility throughout their high school career.
That's what I was looking for. Okay.
Okay. Sorry, I misunderstood.
No, no, no. I understand. I understand. It is complicated, so I, I get it. I understand that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the good work. Is there any way that you could give me just a brief timeline and how the, this is all reviewed and approved? Like, how do we get collaboration?
Sure. I'll use this year as an example because we did move that timeline up. Our content coordinators do a thorough review of what we have in the program of studies, what is required by the state, and any changes that may need to be made due to that. So we actually started this process in July with our coordinators. We push out a, what we call the new course proposal process to every, all staff in the division. This year, we did that in the beginning of September, and there's about a three-week turnaround that we ask for. There are requirements through that process that are necessary for the curriculum review team to make a decision on whether a new course would be available to be offered or not. And for example, in CTE, there's also requirements to apply to the state to offer a course, not just within the division. So then in September, we collect that information. In October, that team meets to review, and that team is represented by members of school administration, curriculum and instructions, school leadership, human resources, instructional technology. It really does look at everything from all perspectives. And then after that, we have gone through any changes that might be necessary. We've added new courses. We go back through one more time to make sure that everything that's been changed needs to be changed, or sorry, everything that needs to be changed has been changed, excuse me. And then I come here.
I appreciate that. I appreciate the collaboration in the process and all the various stakeholders' input. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Anybody else? Sandy? Sorry.
I've had time to maul.
Okay.
Not only maul, but I've been writing back and forth to Ms. Cook because my question originally was about AP classes. I'm very concerned about that dropping of that requirement, and I'll tell you why, because one of the things that I do have a question about is about our AP teachers. Do they, are they able to collaborate with other, do they collaborate with AP teachers from each of our high schools? Is that a collaborative work where they get together? Because the AP course is a set course. It has a syllabus. It's set, and each of those teachers is required to teach that syllabus. Is that right?
Yes. And they have to go through what's called an AP audit process through College Board to be approved to teach that course and for us to be able to call it AP.
Well, before the teachers start emailing me and wanting to cut my throat, I want them to know I do appreciate it. Because I know teaching AP is hard because you're actually elevating what a student may, I mean, for me, I would be down here, and then all of a sudden, I'm having to be up there. I really need some help. But I guess my concern is, is one of the things that we do pay for the testing for our lower-income students.
There is a reduced fee for our lower-income students
Okay.
set by College Board.
We're paying for some of it.
We offer scholarship for it, yes.
Okay. So are we making sure that the students that are, that we're going to pay for, I believe in accountability, I mean, are we making sure that we're doing everything to make sure that they can pass these tests? And how does that, how is that helpful to them by removing opportunities to read? And I understand that they could ask for a reading list, but is that reading list offered to them as a packet? You know, that you're going to be discussing these books next year or in the next however many years you take AP, and it would be wise?
So I don't, I don't know the method in each building on how that information is provided to students, but I'd be happy to get that for you. But I do know that our teachers work very hard, and our counseling departments work very hard to make sure that our students have the information that they need while moving into future classes to be successful.
Right. And I guess if that is the case, why isn't the requirement the same for every high school? Because one of the things that ever since I've been on the school board is we've been working for equity, a word I don't like, between each of the high schools, making sure that courses are the same, making sure that students have access to the same things. And yet, I believe that if we're not requiring or having accountability for our teachers to provide the same level of coursework, that we're not doing our students a favor. And anyway, I apologize to AP teachers in advance.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Thank you. Appreciate Ms. Ween. 7.02 Review Authorization of $1.25 per hour Salary Increase for Bus Drivers. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you recall, in the end-of-year spending plan, the Board approved us bringing forward a $1.25 per hour salary increase for bus drivers, and that since has been approved the end-of-year spending by both the city and the county. And Ms. Ewing is here to address any questions you may have tonight on bringing this salary increase officially to the Board for their consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing, for being here.
Want to give the timeline, Ms. Ewing?
Oh, sure, I can do that. So the effective date of the change will be December 1st for bus drivers employed at that time, and the change will be reflected beginning in their December paychecks. An estimated cost for the remainder of this year is approximately $135,000.
Any comments from Ms. Owenby?
So with this increase of $1.25 per hour, how close does that get as to what WADA pays their drivers?
How much does WADA pay their drivers?
We can get that information for you, but I think traditionally, sometimes when we raise our pay, that it does tend to impact the salaries that other people offer around us as well, realistically.
So I guess what I'm getting at is $1.25 enough? That's what I'm getting at.
$1.25 does take us, we used five comparisons in a chart when we brought this as an end-of-year spending, and the $1.25 did impact where we stood in that chart, which has brought us to the top of the region at this moment in time.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am absolutely in favor of this and happy to support this. I'm curious, probably should offer this question ahead of time, but what was the last raise that we had offered bus drivers? And does this include, it probably doesn't include assistance to these bus drivers? My question.
Raise, bus drivers got specifically?
Yes, ma'am. And how does this compare to that? Is it a certain degree percentage well above that, or is it on pace with what they had received in the past? I'm just curious.
This doesn't include assistance. This is literally just bus drivers
Yeah.
because they have been the most difficult to find. I know the last time we did a bus driver pay raise with several other categories of staff was when we had a total review done of compensation in the school division, and that was probably, I want to say, six or seven years ago. And at that time, there was a significant percentage increase that we can go back and get that information for you. I don't know if Mr. Baker or Mr. Snipes would have it tonight. They would have incredible memories if they do.
Quite a while ago, though. Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Thank you, Ms. Ewing. I appreciate it.
It's fine. He's not calling on me. It's fine.
You said you were going to, do you want? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to build on what Mr. Dowell and Ms. Owenby were getting at, and I support this now, and I appreciate that the localities approved our request. I'm very grateful for that, but I do think we need to be prepared to accelerate in our next budget because I think the last thing we want to do is get caught in this cycle again. And, you know, we know there's a lot of pressure on wages right now, and it is much better for this organization to sort of maintain its staff and its workforce than it is to start to lose it due to competing wages elsewhere and then have to try to rebuild. So I hope we're ready to be bold in the next budget cycle.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. I just could add as well, Mr. Keever just reminded me, of course, we increased pay, bus drivers get a pay increase with everyone else on an annual basis
Right.
depending on what that is. That's part of our natural cycle as well.
When you, yeah, but when you think about the training involved with this particular population and the hard work that they do. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I think, I think we all agree with that on the bus drivers and appreciate all the work that they do. They are the first to meet most of our students and the last at the end of the day, so they do an invaluable service. Thank you, Ms. Ewing. That brings us to the consent agenda. Y'all can just sit down for a while because I've got a lot to talk about here. Consent agenda, 8.01 Approval of Financial Report and Monthly Bills and Payroll, October 2021. 8.02 Approval of Minutes from 10:19:21 meeting. 8.03 Approval of Minutes from 11:09:21 meeting. 8.04 Resolution R 2021 Endorsement of the Safe Routes to School Project. 8.05 Create Policy IGBC Title I Parent and Family Involvement. 8.06 Revised Policy IGDJ Interscholastic Athletics. 8.07 Revised Policy IGED Adult Education Programs. 8.08 Revised Policy JGCA Teacher Removal of Students from Class. 8.09 Create Policy KA School/Community Relations. 8.10 Create Policy KAB Family Engagement. 8.11 Create Policy KKA Volunteers and Parents. 8.12 Recode Policy KKA to KKB Service Animals in Public Schools. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Owenby. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Owenby?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. 9.01 Approval of Personnel Actions. Can I get a motion for approval of the personnel actions as presented this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the personnel actions as presented.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Second. Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Owenby?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. Nine point zero two, approval of revisions to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school calendar. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve revisions to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Oenby. Is there a discussion? Ms. Hummel?
Based on what a lot of our visits to the middle schools and our teachers that came and spoke tonight, I know we're, we're not going with the Monday and Tuesday off. I, I realize that before Thanksgiving, but it, it really, from what I'm hearing, that's the real issue is we need to, within the school calendar, provide during their contracted hours, some relief for our, our middle school teachers, in particular for all of our teachers, and just a recognition for, I think, the stress that they are all under. And I'm not in the weeds and I don't want to be in the weeds, but I, I do sense the extreme level of frustration that our, our teachers are experiencing, and I don't, I don't know how you can, you know, finagle or move things around the puzzle pieces in such a way that we could help out some of our extremely stressed employees. That's it.
So could we review what changes we are making to the calendar? Just to, thanks for, we put that out there.
Yes, sir. I'll have Mr. Keever just remention the two main changes that are being brought to you this evening.
Yes, sir. The first change would be to shift the January twenty-seventh PK through twelve virtual learning day to a student holiday, which would create a, a day of non-teaching for teachers. Additionally, March fourth would also be a day that we shift from a virtual learning day to a student holiday and a non-teaching day for teachers.
So that was March fourth?
March four and Jan. twenty-seven. Just by, you know, as a reminder, January twenty-seventh was previously scheduled as a virtual learning day, January twenty-eighth is a student holiday as well. So parents had already anticipated students not being physically in school on January twenty-seventh. And March fourth, what we are now doing is say that there will not be student teaching and learning occurring on those two days, which should provide some sense of relief for our teachers as those are no longer teaching days.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate that, you know, January to, to April is a long stretch with limited days off through there. Part of what I'm just kind of notionally thinking is we call it a student holiday now? Should we just call it a holiday? To be, is, is there a contractual or other objection to having that just be a student and teacher day off? I know I'm bringing this up at the last minute and I know it's...
I, I think if we were to call a, a general holiday, it would probably be a closure of the whole system because it's, there's more than teachers, there's teacher assistants, there's office staff. You couldn't isolate one group, we would have to call it a, an actual holiday per se.
Right, and so would, are there implications to doing that? Just throwing that kind of out there.
Just working one day less of current contracts across the board.
Right, right. Ms. Cook?
Mr. Kelly, you know, I take your point and I take Ms. Hummel's point, and I guess from my perspective, from a sort of transparency and process perspective, I am, you know, prepared to take action on this recommendation from the superintendent tonight as it was presented at a work session and now it's here for action. But recognizing that I think several members of this board have expressed an interest in doing something else, something additional, and so maybe process-wise and in terms of public notice and providing an opportunity for the public to review what we're, what's being proposed and, and respond to it, maybe we could approve this and consider it an interim step with a request to the superintendent to come back to us with an additional proposal, and then that can go through our process. And it may be another amendment to the school calendar rather than trying to do it kind of from the dais now. Does that mean, does that make sense?
It does make sense. It's, whenever we make sausage from the dais, it usually doesn't turn out very well.
Yeah, so I, you know, so maybe just approve, you know, I'm ready to approve this tonight, but I'm also, you know, ready to say, can we?
Right, so my, my concern is I just want to protect that, that holiday for the teachers that, that, that they're not, there are any other obligations besides planning or, or mental health day or whatever we want to call it. It's, I'm just looking to, going forward, we, we look to protect that day.
Mr. Chair. If I, if I can, if my recollection serves me, I think I heard from staff when we were discussing this in our last meeting, that staff would provide specific guidance to school-level administration on how these days are supposed to be implemented. Is, was that the commitment we had?
That's correct, sir.
Can you share with us what that sounds like, looks like?
Didn't written it yet.
We haven't thought it through completely, but we are very, very aware of the stress that's been experienced with teachers across the system, and one of the key things that we hear is planning.
Yeah.
And time for planning and time for working together to plan for students. And so
We've heard that tonight.
I believe we would want to use some of that time for that purpose, especially in January when there's two days right beside each other. I'm sure we can find a way to create some flexibility within those days as well, but the main purpose is to really give time for people to get together to plan what's happening.
Thank you.
Yeah, I fully, I fully appreciate that. I just want to make sure that, that the, the public and the teachers understand what this board's intention for those days are and that we, and that we honor that and, and honor the teachers in that way.
And Mr. Kelly, we will come back to the board when Mr. Keever comes back with next year's calendar and starts that conversation. We'll be at a point in the school year to look at that long stretch between spring break and May where there's seven weeks of, with no breaks at all, and we would want to come and potentially do another adjustment to the calendar to help our, our teachers and all our staff at that time as well.
Appreciate that. Any other comments from board members? Ms. Aller?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Oenby?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. Nine point zero three, approval of purchase requests of laptops for elementary school student use. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve purchase requests of laptops for elementary school student use with Lenovo for a total cost of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion? It's regular refresh of elementary school laptops. Ms. Aller?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Oenby?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. Nine point zero four, approval of authorization for a dollar twenty-five per hour salary increase for bus drivers. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the authorization for a dollar twenty-five per hour salary increase for our bus drivers.
Thank you, Ms. Oenby, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Any discussion? Ms. Aller?
Ms. Oenby?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. Ten point zero one, the strategic plan update goal five fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two recruitment and compensation. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Annually, Mr. Baker presents some information about compensation and recruitment at this time of the year to prepare us for our budget discussions in January, so I'm going to hand over to Mr. Baker.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the school board and Dr. Heron. Tonight I'm going to give you the update on Goal Five of the strategic plan. As part of Goal Five, we want to recruit highly qualified staff and retain the division's exemplary workforce by creating an environment where transparency and trust are the norm. Tonight I'll be focusing on the strategy of compensation and recruitment. The first strategy of Goal Five that we will discuss tonight is to focus on being the leader in the employees, the leader in the region in employee salaries. For this past school year, our bachelor's degree entry level started at forty-four thousand six hundred dollars effective July twenty twenty. Then we had a mid-year increase to forty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars effective January of twenty twenty-one. This fall, it increased again to forty-seven thousand and eighty dollars. As a result, WJCC is third out of six for the bachelor's degree entry level, within a hundred and twenty dollars of being second. This slide shows how we compare in different milestone years. Also referenced on this slide is the number of teachers who receive the longevity pay, which may help in our teacher retention. For the master's entry level, we now rank fourth out of six. This ranking is significant because the majority of our teachers we hire have at least a master's degree, traditionally two-thirds. On this slide, we show how we rank on the master's scale at the beginning of the scale as well as different milestone years. On the milestone years, where we are sixth out of six or last, we continue to lose ground at each milestone until by the year twenty, we are eight percent below the average of the other five school divisions. At year five, we are five percent behind. At year ten, we are six percent behind, and at year fifteen, we are seven percent behind, and at year twenty, we are eight percent behind. For example, one of the teachers, one of our teachers with a master's degree and twenty years of service would earn a salary of fifty-seven thousand four hundred and five dollars, whereas the average twenty-year teacher for the other five districts would earn sixty-two thousand and ninety-eight dollars. As we enter the budget season, it is important for us to consider these regional compensation rankings. Any questions for you about compensation?
Ms. Cook?
Thank you. So the percentage behind is intriguing, but it's a percentage behind of an average, which is, I'm not sure it's such a great measure. I wonder if we could get the, the gap between the number one spot and then where we are. So in, you know, either raw numbers or a percentage of pay. Because the percentage of an aggregate of the others, I mean, it's an indicator, but it doesn't give us a real sense of how far behind our, our salaries really are. So either dollar figure or a percentage of the number one spot on those years. Does that, does that make sense? Am I?
I can get that for you, but I think I...
It would just, I think it's a better benchmark if, to understand how, how much ground we need to gain.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Young?
And, Mr. Baker, I mean, over, over the period of years, we've been working pretty strenuously on raising our beginning teacher salary. And, and at the other end of the scale, we have paid, we have given a smaller percentage of increase. I mean, is, do I have that right? I mean, I seem to remember that as, at the beginning, the, we give a larger increase and then as it scale goes up, there are places where there's, the teachers don't receive as much of a, a raise.
There are some spots where they didn't get as much, but it's on average, like last year was like, like three or percent, but...
But I mean, I mean, doesn't that contribute to this figure?
I think some of our neighboring districts have also, their, their scales aren't all exactly lockstep scales, so some of the neighboring districts have altered their scales or, or made their scales even farther beyond ours.
And I think, Ms. Young, as we have provided a salary increase to our staff, so have other divisions, so as we attempt to catch up, others are also offering significant salary raises as well over the last two or three years.
Right, no, I understand that, Dr. Heron. I'm just saying that when we give a three and a half percent raise, it should be across the board because, I mean, tonight we had several teachers that came and spoke about, about the fact that our masters, our teachers with masters aren't receiving as much. And, and one of the things that I've heard from at least two principals now is the concern about teacher retention. And, and I, I find that minus eight percent figure really disturbing, well, any of these, five, six, seven, eight, I think that's disturbing as a, as a professional teacher myself because I, I don't think our teachers should be, we should pay our teachers what they're worth. So anyway, thank you.
Why does it close from eight percent to two percent?
I think that some of our neighbors at the top of the scale, they don't go much higher or, I think ours at the top of the scale, when you had, some of the longevity bonus was in there too.
So, so this includes longevity? The, the, the years of service and the rank to others, that includes a longevity, which isn't really pay, it's a stipend and doesn't, doesn't go towards VRS.
It didn't, it didn't affect us on the twenty-five year, so no, it didn't, it did not include that.
Okay, so these numbers don't, because, because my concern is that, is that if they do include longevity, then somebody at ten might think they're closing the gap at twenty-five, but longevity is going to expire by the time they get there. And so that's just, I was, so, so I guess what you're, what you're telling me is that other districts cap out at twenty for masters?
Some cap out at twenty, twenty-five. You know, we go beyond, our scale goes higher.
Long scale.
Well, I mean, for a, for a masters, you should, it would seem to me, but I was just, I just wanted to understand how that closed. I agree with Mrs. Cook's mathematical analysis about the average and the percentages, but so, okay.
I think the reason we took longevity out of the mix and weren't showing two numbers anymore, we did want to give the impression for those of twenty-five years that they would come and be
Correct.
Higher than everyone else because most, no new teachers will get it
Correct.
Coming into our system. And, but this is our, in reality, where we are in, in real salary terms.
Correct, and, and when you look at compensation, it's a total compensation, right? So it's dollars and benefits, and so some of us had that our benefits are too rich, but when you add the dollars with the, the salary dollars with the benefit dollars, it all kind of, it's all a big calculus.
Comparatively rich, not too rich, how about that?
Any other comments from board members before we, Mr. Dowell? Just a real quick point of clarification. Did I hear you say that a majority of our teachers have a master's degree? Did I hear you?
Approximately two-thirds.
Two-thirds, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Oenby, would you like to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to thank you for your work, Mr. Baker, and note that this, this work will never end, so in my time on the board, I do feel like we've kind of nibbled around the edges, and I think there've always been fiscal, fiscal constraints, and those will always exist, but I like Ms. Cook's words earlier this evening when she said it's time to be bold, and I think in the face of the pandemic and the level of stress that all of our staff are under, this isn't the year to not be bold because COVID is rewriting the face of K-12. And so I appreciate the fact that we have tried to increase entry level salaries, but, but now is the time for our division to be bold if we're going to recruit and most importantly retain our teachers. And I, and I say that for the community to hear and understand, we need to support the people who are educating our students under very, very difficult and trying circumstances.
Thank you, Ms. Oenby. I apologize for not seeing you. I think we're good, Tim.
As part of Goal Five, we have a strategy to strengthen recruitment and attract highly qualified and diverse applicant pools. Specifically, our primary aim is to be fully staffed on the first day of school. We continue to face historic challenges due to COVID-19 and a drop in the teacher preparation programs, but in spite of that, we did have some success. On the first day of school this year, we were a hundred percent staff for classroom teachers, and the teacher staff we hired included more minority instructional staff this year than last year, twenty-seven this year compared to fifteen last year. This is important because affirming what we've heard from our community, we strive to have our teacher workforce more closely mirror our student population. Looking at the WJCC student population, it is approximately forty-four percent students of color, while our teacher staff is eleven percent minority. We're doing better with our principals and assistant principals currently at twenty-nine percent minorities, while support staff is almost thirty-eight percent minorities. Nationally, over sixty percent of teachers Nationally, over sixty percent of teachers work within twenty miles of where they attended high school. The future teacher workforce is sitting on the student side of the desk today. We need to grow our own. We currently have thirty-one students enrolled at two high schools in the Teachers for Tomorrow program. We are encouraged that the participants more closely mirror our student population than the traditional teacher prep programs. This year, the students in our Teacher for Tomorrow program are approximately fifty percent minorities. We're also, we've also created a relationship with JMU to help grow our own with an emphasis on diversity. Growing our own also includes recruiting from within. This past year, we had twenty-six substitutes transition to full-time positions within the division. Of those, three are new teachers and one is a new counselor. We also had seven staff transition from aides and clerical roles into, into teaching positions for this current year. Other additional recruitment strategies, as I continue to be on Virginia State College and University's Education Advisory Board, and by fact, we just met last week. Again, we want to increase WJCC's exposure and access to qualified candidates of color. Another recruitment strategy we have used includes early offers to strong candidates. For this year, we had six candidates accept offers this winter for teaching assignments for the next fall. We also hired sixty-three instructional staff before the end of May. It's important to begin the hiring process as soon as possible in order to get the candidates committed to WJCC public schools. Thanks to these recruitment strategies, on the first day of school this year, we were a hundred percent staff for classroom instructional teachers. We hired a hundred and fifty-nine instructional staff members, seventeen percent of whom were minorities. Seventeen teachers, two assistant principals, one social worker, six counselors, and one school improvement specialist. Thank you.
Ms. Oenby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Baker. I appreciate all the effort and work that has gone into hiring teachers of color and other staff of color. But my concern is still retention, and so I, I feel like it's one step forward and three steps back. So with the increase in the number of teachers of color that we've hired this year, how many did we lose? Like, did it, did that mitigate what?
It was a net positive. I don't have the exact, I can get that number for you.
But it was actually net positive still, even with the loss, which worries me.
Any other questions from board members?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to congratulate you for, you know, your efforts in being fully staffed this year. That was no small feat, and I'm not sure how many divisions in Virginia can claim that. So congratulations on that. And I also want to just point out that I've really noticed a difference in the increase in the early offers that you've been making, and I think that's a really great step in the right direction. And I think it engenders loyalty to our division, and so I think that's a wonderful thing. One question I have about the chart around, the breakdown, our staff by ethnicity and race. I wonder, and this may not be of value, but I think about, you know, you have it broken down to teachers' support and essentially administration, building administration. I wonder if it, I'm assuming that the support is, is that assistance in cafeteria and custodial, does that include bus drivers?
Yes, ma'am. Includes everybody on the support scale.
I, I wonder if there's a value in breaking out that support into two buckets, classroom support and other, because I, I think about, I, I think about teachers' assistants, and I've been thinking about them a lot this year because of the role they've been playing during the pandemic. And, and I just wonder if there's an opportunity to, to look at that population as in the classroom, having a really important presence in the classroom for students, and, and as an opportunity to also increase perhaps the, the diversity. And so just paying attention to that breakout might, might be of value. And the last thing I just want to build on what Ms. Oenby said. We have a lot of teachers who are pondering retirement. We have an older workforce, the whole country does. There's not as much of a strong pipeline in coming into the schools. It's becoming increasingly more difficult to fully staff. We believe more students are going to be coming to us next year, which is going to exacerbate any shortages we may experience. So I do think we need to be bold in terms of a salary increase recommendation in the next budget. And I mean bold, like extremely bold, something that is eyebrow-raising enough to make a teacher who wants to retire reconsider for VRS purposes. So I just think that significantly bold is probably something that we need to consider, and I would certainly support. Because if we can convince teachers to stick around for three more years to, to, to impact their retirement because of a significant enough increase, I think it would be very wise of us to do that.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I think the other challenge too, we're going to find is, talking to one of the principals the other day, is the hiring of so many brand-new teachers, many of those teachers did their student teaching virtually. So for many of them, this first year, it's the first year they've actually been able to be in classrooms with students. So it's going to be really, I think, really critical to make sure they get all the support they, they, they really need because they didn't have those experiences that you normally would have if you were a student teacher. And, and obviously, that takes time away so that teachers can help that teacher or the principal can help that teacher. So it's a, it's, it's a challenge. It's going to be a challenge. And, you know, you might even consider, not that they would be supervisors, but historically, student teachers are supervised by very often really experienced teachers who really operate as a mentor as they're going through student teaching. There might, you know, there might be people out there that would be, would like to help out that way. So it's just a thought. We have, we have people that help our students and help our, our regular teachers that come in, volunteer. And we may find there's some very experienced retired teachers out there that would like to do something to help. That's all.
Mr. Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Baker, for your presentation. You talk about the grow-your-own strategy around teacher recruitment. We've been talking about that for a while. How successful have we been with that?
I think right now, well, I think more of the grow-your-own has been our internal staff. It's been teacher assistants and other, other folks that have become teachers for us. Like I mentioned, like we had seven this past year. I think the students is, is progressing. They're, they're still in high school. So I think that this is the first time that they'll be going off to college.
So as a strategy, student for students, it's relatively new?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the, the class, the Teachers for Tomorrow is a relatively new class for our, our school division.
I, I wonder, as you do have these partnerships and ears on the ground, eyes on the ground with many different universities, what does it look like as far as new students, freshmen, sophomore, going to college to become teachers? What does it look like?
It's less and less. I think it's about thirty percent less than it was about five or six years ago. Less people going into teacher, traditional teacher prep programs.
What should our response be because of that? How should we?
I think while being bold, I think part of that is, is, is going to help. I think, again, growing, growing our own, I think, is, is going to help because it's going to be harder to, to find somebody who's, can come from a very, very far distance away. I think, I think I really appreciate a, a realistic job preview so that the teacher assistant who's been in the classroom or, or somebody else who's been in the school or a substitute, they kind of know what they're getting into versus somebody who's never been in a classroom. It's, I mean, how hard it is.
Well, thank you.
And the, the definition of our is interesting. Is it ours, this school board, or is it our as a country that we have different emphasis?
Ms. Hummel?
To piggyback on what Ms. Cook was talking about, being bold, I think it's the whole package that we are offering to our teachers. It's, it's the planning periods. It's the, it's the quality of their work life in addition to the salary that they're paying. So it's, or that we're paying, because, I mean, I think you can pay someone, you know, a nice salary, but if their day-to-day life is incredibly frustrating, it's really not going to matter. I think they're going to leave the whole profession. I don't think we're going to lose them maybe to another school division. I think we're just going to lose them altogether to maybe another, another kind of profession.
Yeah, Mr. Baker, I was, I'd say that starting with the classroom, classroom teachers a hundred percent filled this year is, is nothing more short of miraculous. Particularly when you talk to other school divisions around this community and around the Commonwealth, and certainly when you read it around the state. And, and there's, there's several factors of, involved with that. At least, not the least of which is your team. And, and as Mrs. Cook talked about, the early offers, I think, was, is key. It's a hundred and fifty-nine or so that we, is, is more than normal.
Yes, sir.
Here, I think we're normally in the hundred and ten, hundred and twenty range-ish.
Yes, sir.
And there hasn't been anything normal about the last two years. And the question is, is that going to, going to increase? And at some point, simple economics takes, takes into consideration, right? So as fewer people join the profession, the, people need to staff their school systems. Economics takes, can, can come into play there. The problem is, it takes years to correct it, because it takes four to six years for a teacher to come out of college. And it takes, and the, the, that has to be selected, you know, sometime kind of in high school when people think, think about where they want to be a teacher. And so you're looking at eight to ten years before you fix the problem. And, and, and I think, I think we, Mr. Dow used, said the words our, you know, as, we as a society need to kind of think about that and, and how we honor and respect teachers and what they do and, and how they do it. I think that, I think that has slid a little bit over the, over the decades. But I think it needs to, I think it needs to come back, and we need to appreciate our teachers. You know, a, a teacher, a teacher starting at the school system, they look at, you know, pay and benefits. Teacher staying with the, with the school system looks at pay, benefits, quality, quality of life, as Mrs. Hummel was talking about. There's, you know, some teachers that'll give up a couple of bucks to get a, get a few hours of planning time or to have smaller class sizes or do that kind of thing. And then also, there's, it's community. So we, we continue to not hire new teachers as much as we hire experienced teachers. So we have teachers that have multiple years of experience that come to our system. I think they come to our system for, for pay benefits and community. This is a better community than a lot of other communities where they, where they start, start. And so I think that's, I think that's part of the draw as well. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's an interesting calculus on, on how you balance one part of the scale versus other parts of the scale. But I think, I think that, I know we as a board really appreciate our teachers and how much work they do and how much, what they provide for our students. And we need to continue that and, and show that as we go forward. Any comments from board members? All right. Thank you much. On my place here, ten point zero two, capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-three thirty-two discussion. Any board members have comments on the capital improvement plan that was presented to us last week, actually? No. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I actually, before I talk about the, sort of the, I want to spend some time talking about the big-ticket item in, in the proposed budget. But before I do that, I want to make a comment. I know that, Dr. Heron, you and your team haven't had time to look at athletic facilities. But I just want to make a comment that I think at some point, we're going to have to start looking at that and including them in our capital improvement plan. Just in the last, recently, one of our high schools had to essentially forfeit home field advantage in postseason play because of lack of athletic facilities available. And, and last season, a soccer team had to do that at one of our high schools in, in regional finals. And then, of course, our swim teams don't have home pool, home pool advantage ever. And so anyway, those are just a couple of examples where just a lack of facilities local, locally is negatively impacting our athletes and they're having to, again, forfeit home field advantage, which can, which can matter. And I just want the, you know, wanted to state that publicly. I appreciate everything in this ten-year CIP focusing particularly on the fiscal year twenty-three recommendations, all of the items that all the schools, you know, they're well-considered, well-backed up, well-documented. So I appreciate that. I am excited about the Lafayette High School building renovation and the extra capacity that that will provide at the high school level. I'm sorry for the board that's going to have to redistrict as a result of that, but, you know, good luck to you on that. But I think that's, you know, critically needed. Our, our high schools are a wee bit overcrowded. And so that extra space in, in, under roof that we already have will provide, will, will help a lot. And then, you know, Dr. Heron, I appreciate your moving up the pre-K to five elementary school recommendation, and I want to spend a couple of minutes talking about that. In general, we need additional space for our younger kids. And that really is not even looking forward. That's looking at where we are and where we've been. Building a new elementary school addresses our past enrollment gains, much less our future ones. And, and then I think when you layer on top of that, the need to rebalance our Bright Beginnings program and make it more of a, a special ed and at-risk program as opposed to mostly a special ed program, which is where it's migrated to and was not the original intent of that program. So then when you, if you add more, more at-risk kids to bring that balance closer to fifty-fifty, you need additional space to do that on top of the additional ten rooms that we just learned about, minimum potentially needed, needing from the ONLAR study. So, and that in addition to the class sizes that we've, reduction in class size that we gained as a result of our desire to social distance in the wake of the pandemic, you know, keeping in mind that those class size decreases don't even come close to where we were before the Great Recession. So if we want to be kind of clear-eyed about our increasing student needs and looking back at where we were in terms of class size back then, if we ever want to get there, we're going to need more classrooms. So, so just in general, period, we need more building space at the pre-K five level. So then that begs the question, what kind of space? And, you know, Dr. Heron has recommended a new, a new school building, elementary school building that I presume includes pre-K space, and, and I support that. You know, there's more than one way to skin a cat. We can continue to add trailers at all of our elementary schools. We have them at eight of the nine. Presumably, if enrollment continues as, as projected, we will need to continue to add trailers. We could add wings to two, staff has identified historically that there are two elementary schools that could accommodate wings additions to, to accommodate pre-K space. That, of course, does not address the need for elementary space. So, you know, I don't necessarily think trailers are good. We heard some speakers talk about how they're not ideal. Additions to our elementary schools, you know, relieve something, but not, not the totality of what we need. So that is why I support an addition of a new, a tenth elementary school that includes pre-K space included. Of course, in order to execute this plan, if it's adopted by our fund- Of course, in order to execute this plan, if it's adopted by our funding bodies and then adopted by this board, in order to go into design in fiscal year twenty-three, we'd need land, which hasn't yet been identified. And that's a pretty big barrier. But I think we need to forge ahead with what our needs are and, and, because I think not doing that is, is doing our school division a disservice. So, you know, for all those reasons, I, I support this plan as written. And I do have one question, Dr. Heron, and this has to do with the difference between a room, a classroom designed for pre-K versus a classroom designed for a, 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 a different elementary school class. I think there has been, I've heard discussion in the community that it's inefficient to use a room that's designed for elementary as a pre-K room or vice versa, a pre-K room as an elementary school room. Can you, can you talk about that for a few minutes or, you know, just kind of offer your perspective on that and, and efficiency-wise, whether it's okay to build a classroom and use it for pre-K or kindergarten or first grade or whatever?
The classrooms are generally about the same size. The main difference between a Bright Beginnings classroom and a grade-five classroom would be the inclusion of a bathroom. Every pre-K room and every kindergarten room has a bathroom on site in the classroom except for Matthew Waley, which is obviously a much older school. There's no functional difference really when you look at the rest of the room. It's how the room's set up. The space is the same in a pre-K. You, you bring in smaller tables, smaller chairs. You wouldn't carpet the whole room because a space needs to be left uncarpeted for their artwork and eating and all kinds of things. And there's other, there's a lot of different sensory tables and things like that in the room. But basically, the room's the same. It's just furniture that can be moved that's, that's most different. And, and then the inclusion of a bathroom, which kindergarten also have bathrooms in their classrooms as well.
So is it fair to say then that building an elementary school that includes pre-K space offers you the maximum flexibility depending on enrollment numbers as opposed to building a dedicated space for pre-K, which if, you know, if enrollment in elementary school increases spikes, all of a sudden, you couldn't necessarily pivot that way, right? If?
If you were to build a pre-K space, kindergartners could also be in that space and with different furniture. And so that would give you a lot of flexibility around the use of space in the future.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Ms. Ondby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Cook, for being so very thorough. I just would like to say I concur. I just have a couple additional bullets for the public. I appreciate the work that our staff does. And it was several years ago, we decided to create a ten-year CIP, really for the benefit of the public and our funding partners, so they could see what's coming down the pike and there's no surprises. And I think each and every year, our, our staff work really hard to identify critical needs. And, and the critical need for space has been identified now since 2018. And we've made that case again and again. I think it's, it's clear, clearly evidenced that our neighboring divisions of similar size and divisions who are not next door to us but look the same demographically have many more buildings than we do with compared to the number of students. If you just look next door to York County, they're about the same numbers of students, but three more buildings than we have. Their demographics are a little bit different. Ours are more challenging. But if you look at more like, likewise and similar communities, they have more buildings. So I don't know why this community struggles, has always struggled in building buildings. But I think we have a new challenge with the pandemic. And so back to Ms. Cook's point, we've never really been able to recover from the recession of 2008 when we increased class sizes with a negative impact on our students. And, and now students are struggling even more. So for me, it's just very clear that the, the big ticket item is really, really needed. And then all the other items that are in the CIP are just must-haves, right? This community has always done a really good job of taking care of our buildings and maintaining HVAC systems and roofs and playgrounds. And we could spend some more time on athletics. But I, I appreciate all the hard work. I support it wholeheartedly. I can't say enough that we need more elementary and pre-K space together. Mr. Chair?
Ms. Hummel?
Thank you, Ms. Both.
Ditto.
Yeah. I fully support the, the CIP as well. And I would like to mention, just, just briefly, that I think we have included athletic facilities, rooms within gyms, also gymnasiums that get, that need to be repaired or refurbished. So I need, I know that we need to continue to do that. And as, and also as sports interests build and, and change, that will also suggest that we have to make some changes to accommodate that. But other than that, I really, I do support the, the new elementary high school. I think, I would support additional space there as part of that for pre-K. I think part of it's going to come down to where's the location of the school going to be? Because we already have, I believe, three schools now, elementary schools, that have rooms that were, and have been, have been utilized, were designed initially for preschool kids. And so the, the, the location where the new school is might, might dictate that we might not need it there. But again, we, we might also need it there. My, I suppose, what I think is most important in terms of the preschool space is that it's, it's located in, in an area, in areas so that youngsters who end up going there are not on the bus more than a half an hour. I mean, I think, I would like to think of them as being pretty close to where their neighborhoods are so that they don't travel great distances. But I, but you're right. Dr. Heron really mentioned that because those are one of the things I noticed. And, and some of the places where Bright Beginnings are, they can't do water tables because the whole floor is covered with, with carpet. And, and those are, those are just some of the things that they have, that you have in a really good preschool. So, but other than that, I, yeah, I'm 100% behind this CIP budget.
Ms. Young?
One of the things today when we were visiting was evident that, that there, there is a lack of space. But I, I had a question for Dr. Heron. Dr. Heron, in our meeting on December third with, with the Board of Supervisors and Williamsburg City Council, is the report from on-law going to be? Is that part of the agenda item that day? Would that be presented to them?
The on-law report has been presented separately to all three boards, to school board, city council, and the Board of Supervisors in separate evenings at their own meetings. So everyone has the information and has the recommendations and numbers coming out of the report.
Okay. Because I'm very curious at what their, what their take on the situation will be. I do think we need more space. I, I don't think there's any doubt. I mean, looking at Norwich Elementary, the film, the presentation we had two years ago, I think it was two years ago, before the pandemic, already indicated that that school was very short in space. We were just at Stonehouse. They have three, three buildings, three trailers on the outside of their buildings. And we continue to put money into trailers. And I'm just wondering at the efficacy of that. At some point, it's going to reach a, reach a breaking level because we don't have unlimited spots for trailers at our, at our different schools. And anyway, I, but I guess I would be curious, will there be, I hope there will be some feedback from the Board of Supervisors and the city council that will help us in, if not help us in our direction, but being a little bit more affirming of what the direction that the school board would like to, would like to go.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any other comments from board members? So?
Just, Dr. Beers?
Yeah, just, I, I, just to follow up on what Mrs. Young said is, is, I think, space is really critical. But I also, I, I agree that we need to make sure that the space that we have is appropriate for the, for the students that we have and that don't, we, we can't skimp on something like this. I, I think it's too important. The other thing I would, I would mention is that when, whenever we have gotten, depending on the level of the elementary, middle, high school, especially the high school, when we reached a critical number of trailers, that is what usually led to the creation of a new school. And, and I think that's exactly where we are now at the elementary level. We have a, a, a lot of, and all we're going to, if we don't do anything, all we're going to do is add trailers. And so it really, it really suggests that this is the time to plan and get ready for another elementary school.
Ms. Young?
I just had one more thing. One of the things that I remember from visiting Norwich and also from that presentation and visiting Clara Bird Baker today is, is one of the things that specialists, like your speech teachers, your occupational teachers or therapists, your, anybody that delivers service to our children, they need a space. And today at Clara Bird Baker, the space for the speech teacher for the Bright Beginnings was out in the hallway. That is not an appropriate setting to teach speech. You think about other small children walking by and how disruptive that is to a child learning to, to speak clearly. And I, I know that new buildings are very expensive and they're not going to get any cheaper. But I, as Dr. Beers said, it's, it's important that we have space that's appropriate to the needs of the students. And, and that includes space for specialists and people that are delivering any kind of service, guests, people that are there as guests to deliver service. So I would ask that, as we prepare to make those kind of decisions, that those are taken into consideration. So, thank you.
Ms. Ondby?
I just have to go one more time. Just, just building on to what Ms. Young said, just because, because what you say is so true and, and I know that. But maybe people forget that or, or new people turning in tonight at nine, 10, don't know that what you said is true across every one of our elementary schools, right? And so our most vulnerable students, our students who are at risk, who have learning differences, who have specialized needs, are getting those services on stages, under stairwells, behind shower curtains. We've taken dedicated teacher planning space and converted that into learning space. We've taken reading recovery library space and converted that into learning space. We no longer have dedicated orchestra or band space in some of our elementary schools. Those classes take place on the stage in the cafeteria. So that happens in every single one of our buildings. So I know that, everyone on this board knows that, but maybe people in the community have forgotten that or don't know that. But to Ms. Cook's point, this, this 10th building was needed five years ago. So we're playing catch-up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ondby. As I look, as I look through the capital plan, there are numerous projects in here that are capital maintenance projects, replacing carpet and, and walk-in refrigerators and those kind of things. And, and that's one thing this community can be very proud of is that their school facilities present very well. So a young family, or a family who's looking to have children, school these children, they drive through our community, they can look at any one of our schools and say, wow, that's good. They're not ostentatious, but they present well and they, they reflect well upon this community. So I appreciate all those, all those maintenance pieces in, in, in our capital plan. So when we talk about, we talk about the new elementary school, I'm going to, I'm going to start with the, with the presupposition, then I'm going to, I'm going to kill that later. So if we, if we presuppose that we're not going to grow, that our school system is going to stay the same, and we look at our, look at the needs of our students as our community continues to evolve, as, as Mrs. Ondby and Mrs. Young both emphasized, outside services. So in the, in the recent history, our, our special education population has increased. When people think of Williamsburg, James City County, they don't think of about one out of every two and a half students is free and reduced lunch. They don't look, they don't suppose that that, that reflects our community, but that's what we are. We're about 35, 40% free and reduced lunch. I'll tell you, that's kind of suppressed because as you get into the higher levels, those numbers continue to decrease. Those numbers decrease as, I think there's probably a little bit of stigma attached with that. So, so, so if you really look at what our, what our community is, that it's, it's, there are, there are needs in our community. And to meet those needs, you need to meet those, meet those students in smaller class sizes and smaller groups. And, and the, the pandemic has kind of emphasized that, reemphasized that. It's, that will work its way through our school system. But if you look at the trend of our school system over the last several years before the pandemic, those special ed and, and special education and those, those special needs for our students was continuing to, was continuing to increase, those populations. And then we can crack the egg of English language learners. That population has, has exploded. And it's going to continue to explode. When I was walking Jamestown with Mr. Townsend this week, he took me into his English language learner class and he was very proud to indicate that those students were recognized by the Board of Supervisors last week for doing a service project over the summer in Carter's Grove. And as we left that classroom, he told me that he's, as, he's, he's getting vibes from the community with, as the Afghan refugees who are being, currently being housed at military bases, as they, as they come out into the community, our English language learner population could flip from, flip to Farsi and Arabic in a matter of overnight. Those students have needs. So it's, it's, it's important for our community, you know, as Ms. Cook says, it does a disservice to our school division. It really is a disservice to our community to not have proper educational facilities. So I started that, that with assuming that our, our community doesn't grow, but our community is growing. You look at, you look at the houses for sale and how quickly they turn over and you look at who's buying those houses. And those houses are, are young families. You look at, you know, my own unscientific approach of my, my trick-or-treaters on Halloween night, five to 10 years ago, I was getting a couple of kids, and I got a lot of kids as my neighborhood turns over from, from people my age to people a lot younger. So, and that's happening in communities throughout this community. So in some, in subdivisions and communities throughout our school system. So we are going to, we are going to need facilities. We are going to need to meet the needs of our students. We do tend to delay construction of schools for whatever reason. I think it, we seem to delay until we get enough trailers that certain members of the community start to react to that and they go out and they go and they decide, okay, we got to get a school. And for whatever reason that is, that's what, that's kind of what we do, but we're, we're getting to that point. So I'm fully supportive of the, of the CIP. I appreciate all the work that's put in to develop this. It's really a year-long process that continues over and over and really kind of never stops. So I appreciate the work of the administration and our principals for identifying these projects and bringing them to us. I appreciate the fact that it's a five and 10-year plan so we can kind of give our funding partners a look at what, what we believe the needs of the school system are going to be going forward. And I think it's, it serves us well. And I think it serves us well. Any other comments from board members before we move on? Or Dr. Heron?
Mr. Kelly, just want to point of clarification. Most of the board have spoken. And in the plan right now, we have pre-K through five space. What I've heard repeatedly tonight is in support of the option two that Anlar presented, which was an elementary school to include a wing for additional pre-K spaces to meet the 231 children that are not being currently served in our community. Does the board want to keep it as pre-K through five space or be more explicit? Or is that explicit enough moving forward with your CIP?
I believe it's explicit enough for us. I see a lot of thumbs up, so I think we're good leaving it where it is.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts from board members before we move on? 11.01, board member comments. Dr. Beers?
Oh, gosh. I've spoken so much already tonight. The only thing I would say is, one of the things I would say is, I appreciate the comments that were made by people that came tonight. I know there's some misunderstandings about some of the terms, some of the things that are being done. I have to say that teachers are so busy, they're so tired, they're still, they're just continuing trying to stay afloat to catch up. I don't think they're trying any new curriculum or any new kinds of things in the classroom. It's just, it's just really not going to happen. So I support every effort to give them more time, more time to do what they need to do in their classroom, but also more time for themselves when they're out of the classroom.
Ms. Odenby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to thank all the teachers who came tonight, who spoke, and who came wearing their red for Ed. Almost all of them have had at least one or more of my four children. And so I do know that the exhaustion and the frustration is real this year. And we're not through the pandemic. This is just, you know, another layer of the pandemic. And we know that you're exhausted. We appreciate your perspective. We want to hear it. And I'm sure this division will work to meet the needs of students and teachers and all of our staff. So thank you for coming and thank you for educating my children as well as other students in this division. And then wanted to speak to some of the speakers who came tonight, appreciate their perspective as well, and would encourage folks to stay and listen because board member comments is an opportunity for us to share our thoughts. And while we don't respond directly to speakers, that is when we have an opportunity to kind of share our perspective. And so with regard to the vaccine clinics, we are following national, state, and local health guidelines. We are not administering those vaccines. Trained health professionals are administering those. And students are not required to get a vaccine. Parents or guardians would be bringing their children to the vaccine clinics. So parents and guardians would be fully aware of what they're doing and have signed off on that. And then with regard to the new superintendent, back in the day before COVID, we used, and when we had a local newspaper, we actually had reporters here at every single board meeting. And they would routinely ask us questions and grab us out in the hallway, and we would usually try to run away. I don't know if there's any board member who would seek out a reporter and give them comments. I do know for a fact that comments that I read in the local Daily Press, WY Daily and Gazette, are taken from our transcripts. They watch our meetings. So I can tell you, I personally don't seek out any reporter. Will respond if they seek me out. But so I think information is taken directly from our board meetings and information that's shared at the board meetings. So thank you, speakers, for coming tonight. We want to hear your perspective.
Ms. Odenby.
Thanks. I'm just going to keep it real brief. Just want to say I appreciate the public comments. I appreciate the teachers. And on top of what is a really busy day for them to come to a school board meeting and speak to represent their frustrations is kind of powerful in and of itself. I think all of us, having the opportunity to tour the schools, we're seeing the palpable frustration that our teachers are going through. I think it was so bad last year, just the whole pandemic was such a shock to everyone's system and everyone's trying to just do their best to get through 2020. And then 2019 doesn't end up being any better for the teachers than 2020 was in a lot of ways, more stressful. So I think we just need to recognize that and also recognize that the economy is different than it was two years ago. The choices that people have are different than they were two years ago. People's fears are different than they were two years ago. And just when you take all of that into consideration, anger that people feel about what's being taught in the schools and defensiveness of the people who feel like they're doing the best job they can, it just all creates a difficult situation. So I appreciate the teachers, the students, the parents, the administrators who are fighting the good fight every single day. And it was reassuring when I went to Blair and the principal tells me, I love my job. I love these kids. I love what I do. So ultimately, that's my takeaway. These, the parents, the teachers, the administrators love what they do. They just need a little extra help to get some time in the day, some time back, and some planning time. So if we can do what we can to get them the space that they need, get the planning time that they need, get them a little more money, they will do wonderful and continue to do wonderful things with our children. So that's it. That's for me.
Ms. Young.
I want to thank the people that came out and spoke tonight. I want to thank our teachers who are coming out and speaking up. One of the things that today, Dr. Heron, when we were at Clara Bird Baker and also when we were at JV Blighton, one of the things that came up is volunteers. Volunteers are not allowed within the school buildings right now. And I guess my question is, what do we need to do to be able to get them, those who want volunteers back in the classroom? Because, for example, Mr. Hurley introduced Mr. Dellen, myself, to a teacher that had been retired. And he had asked them to come back, working through the Virginia retirement system, everything, so that was possible. But she pointed out that her husband, and I don't think she's alone, that there are other parents that would love to be back in the school to help our kids get back up to speed because apparently our math deficits are pretty frightening at this point. And so I would ask if we could take a look at what we can do to get volunteers back. And I do understand that we're in the middle of a pandemic, or hopefully we're not in the middle anymore. But my other concern is, as I've listened to teachers and I've heard about teacher burnout, and there's a lot of contributing factors to that. It's not just one thing. A lot of it has to do with reestablishing routine in schools, reestablishing school culture. I mean, it's a whole variety of things. But one of the very things that came out of that for me, because having been a teacher, that period from January until spring break is long. I mean, I think you mentioned seven weeks. It's a long period of time, and your nose is through the grindstone. And I noticed that earlier tonight when Ms. Cook was saying that we shouldn't be debating the calendar right now, that we should, that we could look, maybe ask senior administration to take a look at that calendar and see if there isn't some, something that we can do that can give our teachers a break. Because, I mean, they're already exhausted. I know that Christmas break is coming, which I think is really good. They're going to have a break for Thanksgiving. But I would like us to maybe take a look, as was suggested by Ms. Cook, at that calendar for the spring. Because if teachers are exhausted now, I mean, usually you're on a high through this time of the year because of all of the holidays. I mean, by the time Christmas used to come for me, I couldn't believe that the school year was where it was because I was so excited. I don't feel that right now from our teachers. And I think that's something that I'm sure that you're seriously concerned about, but I'm also very concerned. So I would ask that maybe that you take a look at that and maybe come back to us with some suggestions. So thank you.
Ms. Cook.
I don't have anything tonight, sir.
Mr. Dowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few things. I, listening to public comment around vaccination clinics and trying to be sensitive to gentlemen suggesting that this was a minority voice and perhaps it doesn't carry as much weight, I would disagree with that. I care and I believe all of my colleagues care about every single voice that's shared and perspective, that shared minority or not. I don't know that this is a minority voice perspective. I would offer, though, that don't quite understand it. These vaccination clinics, they are an opportunity for families to engage with a vaccination process that perhaps they want for themselves. So it's providing a choice, an opportunity. I've not seen any coercion. I've not heard of any coercion. My email's always open, phone is always available. I've heard of no such incidents, such as those. And so as I'm, wanted to be sensitive to that perspective, I don't see where it is. And so I appreciate these vaccination clinics. I appreciate that it offers an opportunity for families to get vaccinated if they so chose to. And I appreciate that it's being facilitated by trained professionals. I appreciate the checks and balances that go into it to ensure that a student had gained permission from a parent. And we've been talking about this for several months now. And I think that is being well done, provides a service to the community. I don't see the coercion. I would ask from staff if we could respond to this question about federal or state dollars attached to running a vaccination clinic? That would be news to me. I would just ask if, not tonight perhaps, but in a coming meeting, if we could respond to that and get, for the sake of transparency, get some understanding around that. And I think there was one speaker that mentioned $40 per kid. I wasn't really following that, but maybe there's some other insight that I don't have there. But I would appreciate that. Mask exemptions being denied, I think in a future forward WJCC agenda portion of the evening, if we could hear from you guys, from staff, under what circumstances a mask exemption would be approved or denied, what the guidance is on that around mask exemptions. I think it would help because we've heard that question a few times, I think, from that particular student. And then Ms. Cook, excuse me, Ms. Young mentions volunteerism. We did see that and hear that as a great need from Principal Hurley today and from several teachers, talking about learning loss, trying to catch up, and not having that particular resource, parents that are engaged and want to be a support to teachers and to students. We just adopted a number, slew of parent-family engagement policies that highlight what I believe this division does well already, but gives the community an opportunity to keep us accountable to those things and gives us an opportunity to keep us accountable along a policy framework. I think that, from my position, I think that it's well beyond time to open these doors to our volunteers in a reasonable, responsible manner, but saying to our community, we do need you. Our teachers need you. And let's open these doors to our volunteers and give our teachers and our students the resource that they had been accustomed to prior to this pandemic. And that's all I have. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. I really don't have much to add to what's already been said tonight. I would like to add my appreciation for the folks who took the time to come out and talk to us today. I know it's, kind of gets kind of late and gets into family time for some. So I do appreciate them taking the time to come out tonight and to speak with us. It's also great to visit schools and see school board members in schools. And having the two schools I went to this week, you know, you walk into classrooms and you see students engaged and smiling behind their masks and having fun. And I know when I read the book, it was just a treat for me. And it reminded me of what Dr. Constantino used to say when he was superintendent. And he said, whenever he was having a bad day and it was just, he got to the end of his rope, he'd go drive to an elementary school and read in the classroom. That's, when you're reading to a group of elementary school kids, it just reminds you of what it's all about. And it's all about the kids. So great to see, great to see all the teachers doing great work, great to see all the students doing great work. The class at Jamestown I went to, Ms. Berry's class, very interactive. And they were talking and it was very thoughtful. So I appreciate all that. And so I appreciate all the work the staff did tonight to prepare the things that they brought before us and provide us all that information. And I do also appreciate the teachers coming out and also participating in our school board meeting. Great to see. Moving on, 12.01, Student Advisory Committee tomorrow at 3 o'clock at Lafayette High School Media Center. The VSB Annual Convention is tomorrow, Thursday and Friday, 17, 18, 19, for school board members and those who have been elected will be there. Policy Committee meets on December 16th at 8:30, virtual and in room 300 at the Annex. Upcoming meetings, joint meeting December 3rd at 9 o'clock here at the Stryker Center. We have a closed session December 7th here at the Stryker Center at 6 o'clock. And the work session and action items is December 7th at 6:30 in City Council Chambers here at Stryker Center. And with that, without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.